of Columbia, the Commission on Arts and Humanities, and Events DC, which is also known as the Washington Convention Center and Sports Authority. The Committee as a whole has joint hearings on education matters. And there are two hearings scheduled June 4th and June 11th. June 4th will be public witnesses as well as testimony from the Superintendent of the Office of State, Education, I think I butchered that name. And on June 11th will be testimony from the Deputy Mayor for Education, as well as the Chancellor of the District of Columbia Public School System. The Committee as a whole will also have two days of hearings on all of the measures related to the budget. We call this the big Committee as a whole hearing, which begins, I believe, June 17th at 9:00 a.m. I do know it's June 17th. And will conclude, I believe, at 6:00 p.m. on June 18th. We will be hearing testimony not only on Bill 23-761, which is the Fiscal Year 2021 Local Budget Act, but we will be available for testimony regarding Bill 23-762 Fiscal Year 2021 Federal Portion Budget Request Act, and Bill 23-763 Fiscal Year 2020 Revised Local Budget Emergency Act, and the Budget Support Act, which I do not see the bill number in front of me. So anybody who feels that they've not been able to testify before a, one of the committees of the council will be able to sign up for June 17th or June 18th. However, as with today, there is a deadline for registering so that then a link can be sent and those individuals can be signed up to testify. Why don't I welcome in to the hearing room the public witnesses? And I'll recognize Councilmember Che if she has an opening statement. Councilmember Che.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I may not have an opportunity to participate in the exchange with the witnesses, but I wanted to highlight a matter of concern at the outset. I would ask that the Office of Planning pay particular attention to the proposals for the future of Chevy Chase. Now, I know that Commissioner Randy Speck, on behalf of ANC 34G, has offered testimony to the committee and to several others calling for a coordinated effort in the development of a small area plan for the Chevy Chase Gateway, the realization of our affordable housing goals in Ward 3, and the reconstruction of both the Chevy Chase Library and the Chevy Chase Community Center. Now, it's fortuitous and appropriate that the council is set to take up changes to the comprehensive plan at the same time that the mayor has called for increased affordable housing across the district and within each ward, and that two major district assets are due to be developed, all of this at the same time. The confluence of these circumstances presents us with a unique opportunity to achieve meaningful progress toward our housing goals while planning the next chapter of a significant neighborhood in Ward 3 and modernizing our government resources there. And I'm grateful to the Office of Planning in its submission of the comprehensive plan to the council and that it included the Upper Connecticut Avenue Corridor as a future planning analysis area. And I do look forward to that remaining in the plan as enacted. Now, to realize that part of the plan, though, and to maximize the investments in both the library and the community center, we have to address all in a coordinated fashion, ideally bringing in a mixed use that could incorporate those government facilities with senior and affordable housing. And that requires planning dollars, hence the budget, in the near term. And I look forward to working with you, Mr. Chairman, and Director True Blood to ensure that those dollars are available in fiscal year 2021. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Che. So let me check with my staff. The public witnesses are in the hearing room. Okay, the way I'm going to proceed is, I believe we have five public witnesses. I could say citizen witnesses. I'm going to identify each by name, then recognize each in turn to make their statement. We will allow four minutes. And we have the ability to mute people at four minutes, which is what we will do. And then there'll be questions, if there are questions, from either Councilmember Che or myself. Kathy Zizel, who's Senior Supervising Attorney with the Children's Law Center; Beth Harrison, who's Supervising Attorney, Legal Aid Society of the District of Columbia; Graylin Presbury, who is President of the Fairlon Citizens Association; Kyle Murphy, who's Vice President of the Penn Branch Citizens Civic Association; and Reginald Black, who is Director of People for Fairness Coalition. So we have those five witnesses. We'll begin with Ms. Zizel. And I always apologize because I'm not quite sure if I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
Thank you, Chairman Mendelson. It's Kathy Zizel. Good morning, Chairman Mendelson and Councilwoman Che. My name is Kathy Zizel. I am the Senior Supervising Attorney at Children's Law Center and a resident of the district. I am testifying today on behalf of Children's Law Center, which fights so every DC child can grow up with a loving family, good health, and a quality education. With nearly 100 staff and hundreds of pro bono lawyers, CLC serves one out of every nine children in DC's poorest neighborhoods. Serving nearly 5,000 children each year, Children's Law Center is happy to provide this testimony today regarding DCRA. As we have testified numerous times, our clients continue to see DCRA failing them on both an individual and systemic level. If we, during this unprecedented pandemic, we are concerned about the tenants in terrible housing conditions who are feeling the brunt of shelter-in-place orders even more acutely. These are precisely the families that should have been able to rely on DCRA to create a culture of compliance over the years to ensure their ability to access safe and self-healthy housing. Instead, we hear stories of them being quarantining inside their properties in deplorable conditions because our city continues to lack a strong tenant-focused agency that holds landlords accountable and enforces the housing code. And the city is paying for many of these residents to live in these properties in some of the worst housing conditions where, because we see many of these tenants using the rapid rehousing subsidy. Fundamentally, we do not think that we should keep trying to fix DCRA's Housing Code Inspection Unit through legislation or through the budget. And instead, we should move to pass and fund the Department of Buildings as soon as possible. However, regarding today's proposed budget regarding the increases for inspectors, we do believe the city needs more professional inspectors. But we hesitate because we do not support the expansion of the residential inspector program as we have testified previously. Additionally, when this council has previously given money to DCRA for inspectors, DCRA did not use that money for inspectors and reallocated it. Also, in looking at the budget, it's confusing how a $250,000 increase for residential inspectors only accounts for an increase of one full-time inspector or one additional FTE. Additionally, it appears that this increase in inspectors may come at the expense of enforcement personnel, which is concerning, given the problem with the historic lack of enforcement by DCRA. In response to the Kennedy Street Fire Report, the budget allocates money for a new data system. But we're concerned that this is premature because the report also discusses fundamental flaws regarding problems entering data into the existing system and using data coming out of the existing system. It is unclear if those problems have ever been addressed by DCRA as well. We are recommending that, given the tight budget, both of these investments would be better used to fund the Department of Buildings Establishment Act. We would be remiss if we did not also highlight that DCRA, by failing to conduct effective enforcement actions, not only undermines a core component that makes the housing code system effective, it also leaves money on the table as in an economic climate when we cannot afford to do so. In addition to ensuring that enforcement action actually happens, our written testimony highlights other key revenue enforcements that we propose to bridge the revenue gap in this budget cycle in order to ensure that there's equitable recovery for all DC residents. We appreciate their opportunity to testify today, and we welcome any questions the committee may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zizel. Ms. Harrison.
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson, Councilmember Che. My name is Beth Harrison. I am a Supervising Attorney at the Legal Aid Society of the District of Columbia. And I am part of a team of 24 attorneys and support staff who represent hundreds of tenants in the district every year in housing-related matters. Like Ms. Zizel, our clients struggle with poor housing conditions. Many of them are living in unsafe, unhealthy housing. And of course, the current pandemic is just highlighting that housing is a social determinant of health and that achieving the kind of recovery that the mayor has described, that I'm sure is the goal of the council, will require putting a focus on public health and safe, habitable housing. And so I want to make a few observations about the budget and then also just DCRA generally. In terms of the mayor's budget, what we see is more or less flat funding in terms of residential inspections. As Ms. Zizel mentioned, there's an increase of $250,000 for residential inspections. But there is a similar decrease and a loss of additional FTEs for scheduling and enforcement. And those two units work closely together. There is an increase in a fund for rehabilitation, but that doesn't restore a prior cut. So we're still below FY 2018 funding. And that's a fund that is used by DCRA to make repairs. And then something that is very troubling and I want to draw attention to in the Budget Support Act is a provision proposed by the mayor, which we saw last year as well, to take the nuisance abatement fund, which right now is focused solely on making repairs when landlords do not comply. And then DCRA can put a lien on the property and try to recover that money. It currently funds 64 full-time equivalent positions over $6 million a year. And the language in the Budget Support Act would turn this into essentially a general-purpose revenue fund for DCRA to pay for inspections. But also, there's language that says anything that improves the operations of the agency. And we think that would be a mistake at a time when so many residents have poor housing conditions. And that fund helps DCRA intervene in individual cases and make repairs that are needed. Just focusing more broadly, Mr. Chairman, you have heard from us on a number of occasions from Legal Aid about our position on DCRA and its fundamental failures to enforce the housing code. We testified at Oversight about that a few months ago. We think the most important funding priority with regard to DCRA is to break off residential inspections. And the Department of Buildings Establishment Act is a foundation for that. We would like to see that enacted and funded in this current cycle. We have testified about ways we would improve and strengthen that bill. But we believe there should be an independent agency focused on residential housing inspections, focused on tenant health and safety with a consumer protection focus. And we realize this is going to be costly when we're in an austere budget environment. But we also think that this is critical to achieving the kind of recovery that the mayor has described to build a more equitable and just District of Columbia and to protect residents' health and safety, starting first with their homes. We also believe that other proposals before the council should be enacted this session, some of which will have budget impacts. And that includes Bill 23-132 to require inspectors at DCRA to be trained to be able to cite for mold violations. Bill 23-394 also has language about the ratio of inspectors. This is something that we have testified about and Children's Law Center has testified about to get more inspectors, although I share Ms. Zizel's concerns. And also, just looking at that bill and then the omnibus bill that was enacted but has not been funded last session in terms of tightening penalties and enforcement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to testify this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Mr. Presbury.
Thank you, Chairman Mendelson. Good morning, and also to the Committee of the Whole. Can you hear me okay? Yes?
I'm muted, so I can't answer you. Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. My name is Graylin Presbury. I'm submitting this testimony on behalf of the Fairlon Citizens Association and the Pennsylvania Avenue East Community Coalition, of which Fairlon is a member. My testimony is in support of the FY 21 budget submitted by the Office of Planning. We are requesting $150,000 to update the Pennsylvania Avenue Southeast Small Area Plan dated January 2008, which is relevant to Pennsylvania Avenue East of the Anacostia River, which is referred to as Penn Avenue East in my testimony. The plan is now 12 years old and needs updating. Numerous recommendations for revitalization were made for the Pennsylvania Avenue East in this plan. But unfortunately, there have been little or no implementation. We're requesting that these funds, we're requesting these funds because Pennsylvania Avenue is one of America's great streets. Yet, when you cross the Souza Bridge and the Anacostia River going east, it has not kept pace with nor experienced the revitalization that has occurred on the west side or in other city neighborhoods. Two, the area is underserved by retail amenities, grocery stores, restaurants, et cetera. Stakeholders are disproportionately vulnerable to the health and economic dangers of COVID-19, and we need help now. And fourthly, the area is vital, the area is a vital commuter corridor that serves over 25,000 DC residents within a one-mile radius, but has no metro access. So in brief, we're requesting $150,000 to update the 2008 Pennsylvania Avenue Southeast Small Area Plan. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this important community issue.
Thank you, Mr. Presbury. Mr. Kyle Murphy.
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson, Councilmember Che, and fellow witnesses. My name is Kyle Murphy. Mr. Presbury, before me, I'm here this morning to ask the council to include $150,000 in the Office of Planning's 2021 budget to update the Pennsylvania Avenue Southeast Small Area Plan. I first moved to the district in 2006 and have been about to be a Ward 7 resident for the last three years. I'm the Vice President of the Penn Branch Citizens Civic Association, and I'm a founding member of the Pennsylvania Avenue East Community Coalition. In the coming days and weeks, you will hear from most of our founding members as we advocate for several relatively modest budget measures to support community development along the Pennsylvania Avenue Southeast Corridor east of the Anacostia River. Our coalition of community associations and leaders is requesting $150,000 to update the Small Area Plan, which is now more than 12 years old. The existing Small Area Plan makes many recommendations for revitalizing the corridor. Unfortunately, very few of these recommendations have been implemented, and community needs have continued to grow and changed. Updating the plan is an important initial step the district can take to better serve the residents, businesses, and organizations who call this area home. Ward 7 and its residents have been among the worst affected by the coronavirus crisis. And during the last recession, our communities suffered some of the sharpest losses in income, wealth, health, and educational outcomes. Most importantly, these losses were among the slowest to reverse during the economic recovery. We must not let this history repeat as we work to recover from the current situation. Pennsylvania Avenue is one of America's great streets. The section of our corridor from the Souza Bridge to Southern Avenue looks very different from the rest of this historic street. Some of the city's most iconic businesses, residences, and resources line the avenue elsewhere. On our side of the river, we see vacant and dilapidated buildings, deteriorating infrastructure, and a lack of community-serving resources. This is why our communities have come together to support revitalization and why more than 1,000 of our community members have signed a petition calling for the city to act to support our efforts. As you look at difficult choices to help our city emerge stronger from the coronavirus crisis, I urge you to think about our communities east of the Anacostia River, and particularly, my friends and neighbors who have spent decades advocating and waiting patiently for government and private investment to deliver better services. These are the people who stand to lose the most when our economy is suffering and who have not often enough been the priority when times are good. In conclusion, I hope we can count on your support to include $150,000 in the 2021 budget to update the 2008 Pennsylvania Avenue Southeast Small Area Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And Reginald Black.
Yeah, so Mr. Mendelson actually is Robert Warren.
I kind of recognize your voice. Are you testifying for Mr. Black?
Yeah, he signed me up to testify, sir. Yeah, so I'm testifying.
He signed you up with his name, but I'll let you go forward.
Thank you. So, good morning, Councilmember Mendelson, Committee of the Whole. My name is Robert Warren, a lifelong DC resident and the current director of the organization People for Fairness Coalition. I'm the co-chair of the Consumer Engagement Work Group for the Enteage Council on Homelessness here in Washington, DC. People for Fairness Coalition is also a member of the group of the Grassroots Planning Organization working on giving feedback and suggestions to the DC Compassive Plan. People for Fairness Coalition's primary goal is to bring about a public policy focusing in on universal housing rights for DC residents who are qualified for said housing vouchers. Those most vulnerable residents who are, who we are now seeing affected by the most, the most with high rates of infections and some deaths in the homeless community. We already had a 100% increase in homeless deaths from 2018 to 2019. During this COVID-19 health emergency, we need to focus on housing our most vulnerable residents now more than ever before. The mayor's current budget proposal is a recipe for more homeless deaths and hardships for our most vulnerable residents here in Washington, DC. In a time when we need a real more budget with racial equity lens so we can stop the spread of the COVID-19 virus amongst our most vulnerable residents. With that said, as always, which has been stated, housing is health care for many of our most vulnerable residents. The DC Compassive Plan has specific recommendations during health emergencies. One of them being is to try to house our most vulnerable residents in place. And the most safest place for our most vulnerable residents is to have their own place of residency in Washington, DC. The current draft before you states, I won't read that part, Mr. Mendelson, because you have that part. But I do want to look at the COP Plan draft also stated in policy H217, direct rental assistance. Develop a fund program that provides direct rental assistance for extremely low-income households earning less than 30% of the area median income, including persons experiencing homelessness, individuals and families in need of permanent shelter or rapid rehousing. Continue supporting federally funded rental assistance programs, including public affordable housing, project-based Section 8, and Housing Choice Voucher Program 5.10.11. We also want to stress the importance of implementing the Vacant to Virus Reduction Plan, which has identified as of November 15, 2019, DC has, has almost 10,000 vacant apartment units across about 3,000 buildings. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mendelson, to testify before you today.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We've been joined as well by Councilmember Bonds. I'll recognize her when it's time for her to ask questions. The five minutes for rounds of questions, I don't know if I'll need all five minutes. I did have a few questions. I think I'll start with the Pennsylvania Avenue testimony. The Mr. Presbury or Mr. Murphy, maybe Mr. Presbury. There was a plan done in 2008. Why does it need updating as opposed to just implementing it? It isn't good enough?
Well, the neighborhood has changed since then. It's over 10 years old. And our needs have changed. There's, there was once an idea of creating a circle at Minnesota and Pennsylvania Avenue. The needs have changed. That's, that's the best I could put it.
And what is the, roughly, the boundaries of the Small Area Plan? I'm not looking for an exact answer.
Roughly from the end of Souza Bridge to Southern Avenue.
So it's the entire length of Pennsylvania Avenue Southeast, east of the Anacostia River?
Yes. It includes three commercial nodes, if you will. Pennsylvania, Minnesota, Pennsylvania and Branch, and Pennsylvania and Alabama.
Okay, but it's the entire strip, not just those commercial nodes?
Yes.
And when, when it was adopted in 2008, did it have broad community support or was it controversial? You were around.
Yes, I was around. And, and to be honest, many Fairlon members felt that we shouldn't support this effort because we've, we've gone through this before and nothing has happened. But I tell them, yes, we do need to support this because while we, while we're not, for the most part, in Ward 7, we're in Ward 8. But it's within a half a mile of where most of us live. So it's, it's within our interest to see Pennsylvania Avenue East revitalize. And, I mean, over the years, there's been so much deterioration. I mean, we once had a CVS that, that's gone. You know, now for us in Fairlon, we have to venture up to, well, I was going to say venture up to Pennsylvania and Branch, but that's closed. The CVS is now closed there. So we have to leave our community or, you know, those commercial nodes that's closest to us to find these types of amenities.
That speaks to the change, but I was asking about support. So Fairlon was somewhat hesitant in 2008, but not for planning reasons. I'm taking it that generally the plan was supported by the community in 2008?
Yes, generally, yes. I'm saying today, there's concern that, well, nothing ever happened since 2008. What makes us think anything will happen now?
Mr. Murphy, do you have anything to add to that?
Just emphasize the points that Mr. Presbury has made. There has been changes along the corridor, around the corridor, that include traffic that's coming through, resources that were once here that are no longer here, that we think that a fresh start, but building on the 2008 plan is the best approach going forward. Thank you.
Sorry, I was, I said thank you, but I was muted. For Ms. Zizel, you testified that the, I was a little surprised at this. So apparently, there's some money in the budget for, I'm going to say, computer upgrade, the CRM system. And you not only want that reallocated, but then the other small increases you noted, scheduling and enforcement and residential inspector, all that reallocated to the Department of Buildings Establishment Act?
Well, scheduling enforcement, sir, is actually a decrease. There's a cut in scheduling and enforcement that's almost equivalent to the increase in inspections. We think that was reallocated across. So we're concerned about the cut in enforcement. For inspection, if, if the inspections was an increase to professional inspectors, we likely would support it. But we're concerned that it's, it appears to be only one FTE for professional inspectors. And we're concerned that it's likely an increase in the residential inspection program, which we have some serious concerns about how, how effective that program is and the use of that program. And so we don't support the increase of the residential.
Speak to me about CRM, and I'm out of time. If you could just speak to that.
Yeah, so, I mean, to be honest, we don't have a lot of information about the use of the CRM program. But the, the big concern we have is what the Kennedy Street Report also highlighted was that nine people had simply failed to enter information into the existing program that they had. And that's been a consistent refrain at DCRA, is that they're not entering information into the systems that they have. So, and we've constantly heard about upgrades of data systems in the last year with the new director. But there doesn't seem to be the data entered into the system. So consistently upgrading systems might be fine if it's necessary. But changing computer systems consistently without the staff entering the data in or using the data that comes out seems to be throwing money at computers without the staff culture there to actually use the data. And so we would rather see the money spent on an agency that's actually going. And so we would rather see the money spent on a agency that's actually going, if, if the choice has to be made in this, in this budget cycle, which it seems like we're having to make tough choices, we would rather see the money used to be put towards an agency that was actually going to be doing the, the work rather than consistently putting money at new computer systems without the data and information being put in and used out of them.
Thank you. I'm out of time. I would have some questions for Ms. Harrison, but as I said, I'm out of time. Thank you for, all of you for your testimony. Councilmember Shay, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman, but I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonds.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I don't have any questions. I'm just very interested in hearing from the witnesses today. As you know, as Chair of Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, it's very important to understand what our citizens feel anytime they have an opportunity to talk about housing density, new communities, neighborhoods, and how we manage the construction permitting process I am particularly interested in. And so I haven't heard a lot about those items this morning. Maybe it's because I had a real difficulty getting on, but I'm on now and so I'm on this hearing and happy to be here. And so I look forward to hearing more and especially I want to hear from our government witnesses as to how they're going to spend their budget in this very unusual time for the District of Columbia. So thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the witnesses. I enjoyed what I heard. Thank you. I know more about where Fair Lawn is and their interests, and I certainly am very curious about this fund you're speaking, Ms. Seidel. So I will try to follow up on those two items, but thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember. Since, a very brief questions from my colleagues, let me just ask a follow-up to Ms. Harrison. I think your testimony was silent with regard to that CRM upgrade. What's your view of it or what's Legal Aid's view of it?
I mean, I agree with Ms. Seisel that, you know, computer upgrades can be helpful, of course, but I, you know, it, I'm just going to state the same thing because I think it's a stunning fact that so many employees of DCRA had knowledge leading up to the Kennedy Street Fire. They had a very fancy new computer system that was supposed to track everything and nobody put it in there. And you know, what also has come out as a result of that report is things like, you know, supervisory positions, they are tracking things on Excel spreadsheets saved to their desktop that is not accessible to other employees at the agency. And so that impedes communication within the agency and responding to complaints and so forth. It also impedes oversight. And so I understand the, the point of the computer system is to address some of those issues, but I think the Kennedy Street Report showed even with those upgrades, as Ms. Seisel was saying, if you don't get the employees using it, it's not going to be helpful. A lot of that money at this point has been invested, but I share the concerns that the computer system, if it's not used, is just not going to work. And, you know, fundamentally, when you have the culture that DCRA has, you need to do something else to actually get the agency moving and working in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. I was muted for a second.
Councilmember Minison, is it I can make a, just a quick statement concerning?
Not really, because I don't think I had a question for you and you already had your four minutes for a statement. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn to the government witnesses. So the five citizens who testified, you will be removed as participants, as I understand it, but you will still be attending, which means you should be able to watch.
So, so there's a chance for me to make a quick statement to a councilmember's statement about new communities?
Well, Mr. Warren, you had your four minutes. Why should you have another chance at a second statement?
No, because she made, she made the statement that she didn't really hear anything from the witnesses around new communities and some other things. And I do have some feelings.
Well, why don't, why don't you follow up with, with Councilmember Bonds after the hearing? So let me turn now to the government witnesses, and the first is Andrew Trueblood, who's the Director of the Office of Planning. Mr. Trueblood?
Thank you, Chairman Mendelson. Great. Thank you, Councilmember Bonds and Councilmember Shay, as well as the staff of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Andrew Trueblood, and I am the Director of the DC Office of Planning. I am pleased to be here on behalf of Mayor Muriel Bowser to discuss the mayor's fiscal year 2021 proposed budget for the Office of Planning. It is also worth mentioning, in this world of Zoom meetings, you can't see who is sitting next to me because they are not sitting next to me, but they are here, as well as my staff, my Chief of Staff, Malika Scriven, as well as Ed Giefer from our team, as well as Doris Benson from the AFO's office. Last week, Mayor Bowser presented DC Hope, the Fiscal Year FY 2021 Budget and Financial Plan, the district's 25th consecutive balanced budget. This budget does more to make Washington DC a place where people of all backgrounds and in all stages of life are able to live and thrive by making key investments in things like affordable housing, infrastructure, education, health and human services, economic opportunity, seniors, and public safety. These investments reflect key priorities identified by district residents at budget engagement forums and telephone town halls held during the budget formulation process with adjustments, as you know, based on the COVID-19 pandemic. At OP's February 27th Oversight Hearing, I discussed OP's mission, structure, accomplishments, and fiscal year FY 2020 priorities. Like all district government agencies, the COVID-19 health crisis has significantly affected our current and future work program. OP is now supporting numerous response reopen and recovery efforts. Because of the importance of an updated comprehensive plan given the COVID-19 crisis, OP transmitted the mayor's comprehensive plan proposal to the council in April. The sudden onset of COVID-19 at the end of the comprehensive plan update process, but prior to council submission, allowed OP to review the draft to ensure that it reflected our new reality and properly positioned the district for longer-term recovery activities. Much of the language in the proposal already spoke to relevant issues around resilience, equity, housing, and public facilities. However, we also broadened language to more directly speak to health emergencies and the likelihood of an economic downturn. We added new policies and actions related to ongoing monitoring, response, and recovery related to this event. With these changes, the mayor's proposal will serve as an important guide to manage change and to help Washington DC recover from this health and economic crisis. We look forward to a hearing after the budget process and, given the increased need for a long-term guide during and after the pandemic, strongly support the council's efforts to ensure the passage of the comprehensive plan in 2020. OP is home to DC Census 2020 Program, which is leading an in-depth, community-based campaign to get a full and complete count for this decennial census. Due to the COVID-19 health crisis, it is even more important that our hard-to-count communities participate in this census. As you know, census data is used by federal government, by the federal government to allocate funds to back, to support the district every year, and over $6 billion a year in federal funding is determined through the census for programs such as Medicaid, SNAP, housing vouchers, and education programming. We are partnering with Mayor's Office on Community Affairs, the Complete Count Committee, and our community grantees to deploy new methods to safely reach residents, whether through virtual town halls or through in-person opportunities such as food distribution to seniors. The district's goal is to keep up with the national response rate, which is about 60% right now. The US Census has extended the self-response timeline, and it is not too late to complete the 2020 Census by going to 2020census.gov or by calling 1-844-330-2020. OP's Food Policy Team, led by Director Ona Bakuas, has been deployed to support the district's Emergency Operations Center to assist with emergency food assistance response and ensure food distribution to our most vulnerable residents and communities. The team helped design and implement a waiver process to allow farmers' markets to open and provide necessary services to residents across the city in a safe manner. They will continue their important work around food insecurity and necessary services for the district's most vulnerable populations, including the food insecurity study that DC Council passed last week that they have already begun working on and collaborating with cities from across the country on. OP is partnering with other district government agencies on COVID-19 recovery efforts and has supported activities around public space interventions that may allow for commerce, whether through curbside pickup or additional sidewalk or road space. We will continue to work with our partner agencies to support the district's safe and equitable reopening. Under Mayor Bowser's District Economic Recovery Team, or DIRT, effort, OP is compiling data and leading inter-agency discussions around economic recovery impacts of COVID-19. The team has produced a weekly monitoring report, attracts and analyzes key indicators to inform the district's recovery efforts. As part of this, OP is also continuing to prioritize and support the mayor's efforts around housing and recovery, which remain a critical issue for district residents, as some of the public witnesses shared. OP will continue to be a critical agency in supporting COVID-19-related response and recovery initiatives and is also supporting the Mayor, Mayor Bowser's reopen DC efforts. Last week, on Thursday, the reopen DC Advisory Group chaired by Secretary Michael Chertoff and Ambassador Susan Rice, recommended that the district reopen in stages guided by health metrics and rooted in DC values. We know that in order to open, we will need to address significant disparities across race and income and will aspire to build a more equitable District of Columbia, as envisioned by the comp plan proposal. The mayor's total fiscal year FY 2021 budget for OP is a little over $11 million, consisting of $10.4 million in local funds, about a half a million dollar in federal grants for our historic preservation program, $150,000 in special purpose revenue for our historic program, and $10,000 in private grants. For the Historic Homeowner Grant Program, the mayor's budget includes funding of $250,000 for FY 21, which is the same as FY 20. These grants will continue to pay for exterior repairs, rehabilitation, and structural work in homes in eligible historic districts for low to moderate income homeowners, many of whom are seniors and longtime district residents. The mayor's FY 21 budget includes a half a million dollars from an annual federal grant by the National Park Service to continue to support three and a half of our FTEs in our historic preservation office and to fund grants and contracts to support the preservation of the city's historic resources. It also includes a $10,000 placeholder for any other federal grants that may carry over from FY 2020. The mayor's FY 21 budget includes $150,000 in special purpose revenue funded by fees collected from nominations for new historic landmarks and districts and from fines paid by property owners or contractors for performing unapproved work on historic properties. OP will use any fund balance from FY 20 and projected FY 21 collections to support historic preservation programs, including our administrative support of the city's Historic Preservation Review Board, such as $15,000 to pay stipends to members of the HPRB. The mayor's FY 21 budget took reductions in local funding to address our revenue shortfalls. Most of OP's local budget is for personal services necessary to pay for 72.5 FTEs, and retaining all of our FTEs from FY 2020 was a critical priority and something that is maintained in this budget. All of our cuts are focused on our non-personal services budget, or our NPS budget, which removes one-time funding of $2.5 million for Census 2020, as well as about a half a million dollars for contractual services. It also includes a cut of supplies. As OP reformulated our FY 20 budget and developed an FY 21 budget that helps address significant revenue shortfalls, we have a unique opportunity to rethink our traditional planning efforts. Because OP's budget is almost entirely dedicated to funding for our staff and we are not implementing any staff reductions, we will have a much smaller budget for contracting, which we have typically used to provide specialized support around areas like market analysis, community engagement, and design. OP is fortunate to have a diversity of some of the top experts in a variety of planning disciplines, so we plan to rely more on our staff to continue to manage and produce our new generation of plans and studies. Given the reduced resources, we will reassess the number and scope of planning efforts while ensuring high-quality, implementable plans grounded in analysis and bolstered by robust community engagement. With the current state of social distancing, OP also recognizes that community engagement will need to change and sees it as an opportunity to address longstanding concerns about the equity of our engagement. We are exploring new opportunities to conduct virtual meetings, to provide phone and text messaging opportunities, to utilize community partnerships, and to use new online engagement platforms to continue our area-based planning efforts for fiscal year 21. In closing, the resources allocated to OP will play a critical role in supporting the mayor's bold vision for the district, including a focus on finalizing the comp plan, assessing equity in the context of the health crisis, and renewing place-based planning efforts. The council and this committee are important allies in these efforts, and I look forward to working with you to achieve our shared goals and give all residents a chance to enjoy health, opportunity, prosperity, and equity during and well beyond the COVID-19 crisis. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I look forward to answering any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Director Trueblood. So the way I'm going to do this, I don't know if I was clear earlier, is we will have rounds of questions for Mr. Trueblood, and then we will go to the Office of Zoning with questions and then to the Director of DCRA with questions. So I'll begin, and 10-minute round for questions. I'm not doing a great job of paying attention to the clock, but I see it on the screen. Let me begin with this. Mr. Trueblood, when you have, in the past, when the Office of Planning has contracted for special, small area plans, how much does that cost?
So we, we look back at our history of small area plans, and some of the larger ones were about $350,000, $360,000. We typically say about $250,000. We have said that. Granted, I think when those small area plans were put together, it was in, at a time where we use capital budget, which is important to note for a few reasons. Number one, it's multi-year, so you can do it over, you can budget over the course of a few years, which is how long a small area plan takes. And it's just a little bit easier to get. In, in the, around 2013 or 2014, it was determined that that was not an eligible use of capital funding. And, and you see at that time is also when our small area plan budget basically got much smaller. And I think what's important is as we look forward to our future area planning efforts, that we're thinking about how to make them maybe a little bit more nimble, use more of our staff, and also do them faster. So the intention would be to do things that maybe are not quite as expensive, but maybe more targeted to the particular issues that a community is facing and to get them done in, in a more expeditious manner.
So, did I hear you say typically about $250,000? That's when you were tracking it out?
In back, yeah, I would say in the, in the kind of traditional way that was done, that small area plans were done in the early 2010s, late 20, late aughts.
Around, I'm trying to double-check the number. You said around, typically around 200, 250?
It's a range. I would say 250 for, you know, a normal small area plan, but they could be, you know, much higher. Walter Reed was, was a half a million or more, but that was also federal funding.
So you heard the testimony from representatives of Fair Lawn, and I think it was Penn Branch? I'm going to be in trouble because I think I got the name wrong. The, they would like that small area plan updated, and I know Councilmember Shay, who said she may not be able to stay on the entire time, was advocating for Chevy Chase?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Well, maybe I'll leave it to you, Councilmember Shay, to follow up on, on the issue. But with regard to Pennsylvania Avenue, a small area plan was done in 2008? Why shouldn't it be updated now and how much would that cost? Or you could do that in-house?
I would, I think there are a couple of answers to that. So in the comp plan proposal that's at council right now, our generalized policy map is actually, we, we use it as a tool to out, to, to suggest where we would be focusing our next round of place-based planning efforts. Chevy Chase is one of those areas that we added to that. So I think that is what we are using as our guide for place-based planning efforts, insofar as there are others that are important. I would suggest that we, it'd be a great opportunity to discuss it at the comp plan hearing and with council over the coming months. But there's another question I think that we are, we are working on, which is the implementation piece, oftentimes which falls outside of the scope of OP. So as we think about our next generation of plans, we're going to be very focused on ensuring that we put together plans that are implementable and that have the buy-in from agencies across the district government, so it doesn't just become a plan that goes, that gets approved and, and just goes on a shelf, but that it actually is. but that it actually is something that is used to help guide our agencies and our, and our residents and our businesses as they move forward.
I'm going to shift a little to the comprehensive plan. The Committee of 100, a week or two ago, wrote that the council should return the draft comprehensive plan to the Office of Planning, and they listed three reasons. One, having to do with the attention is so focused on the public health emergencies that there isn't time to focus on the comp plan, but their main argument seems to be this: "The draft comprehensive plan is fundamentally based on the assumption that the district will experience, quote, 'a greater pace of growth,' unquote, and fails to take into proper consideration for planning for the impact of the pandemic, including its likely impacts on population growth, employment, and revenue. More importantly, for now, it cannot do so. It may well be many months before the city can fully gauge the nature and extent of this crisis's effect, which could fundamentally change how we experience education, retail, employment, and recreation. The framework element in the amendments must outline a city plan that reflects our real challenges. It would be foolish to expend time and effort on a new plan of which critical components may well be obsolete upon adoption." How do you respond?
I could not disagree more in all of those, and let me, let me explain why. Number one, I think that the comprehensive plan we have now is woefully out of date. It doesn't address things like equity, or housing, or many of the issues we face now. So saying that we should rely on an out-of-date plan because, because out of momentum is worrisome to me. I think the comp plan, as we articulate it, is really meant to be long-term. It's meant to be thoughtful beyond any particular era, or epoch, or economic cycle, and I think it stands up to that. Moreover, I think it is exactly the kind of document that can be very useful as our agencies think, and agencies and residents and businesses and nonprofits think about what it means to recover. So, you know, I just, I think there's always a reason not to do something. In this case, I think not doing something would, would actually be very detrimental to the district, and I think I would really worry about it. It would, it would stymie our ability to respond as the Office of Planning and to do some of the area planning efforts that we want to do. So I just, I, like I said, I couldn't, I couldn't disagree more.
I'm going to shift the subject. The census. So you did speak to that in your statement. You've been hampered by the social distancing and stay-at-home, and if I remember correctly, we're at a point where we're beyond folks just mailing in their census form. We need to be going out and knocking on doors. So how are you going about, I don't want to say completing, but getting every last person counted?
Yeah, so let me just first, first off, say it's not too late to complete the form. It is not too late. You can still go to 2020census.gov or that phone number that I wish I could repeat, but it's over here. I think it's, I'm not even going to remember. Please, I'm going to pull it up because this is important. 1-844-330-2020. You can call up if you don't have internet access or you're concerned about that. So there are multiple ways for people to self-respond. It's not too late. As I mentioned in my testimony, the census has extended deadlines, recognizing some of the issues at play. So please, everybody, and council members, when you talk to your constituents, please share with them it's not too late. It's not too late. And, and more importantly, if you respond now in the comfort of your own home or using your own device or phone, you will not have to have somebody knock on door. We will not increase the risk of you or a potential numerator having to visit you. So it is really critical that all residents self-respond during this time. So we did, it is worth mentioning that we had lots of plans to do block parties and in-person efforts throughout the month of April. Those, we had to pivot. The good news is we had a lot of infrastructure in place, whether it was through our community-based organizations that we have worked with and continue to work with, who have done things like close town halls, or through some of the printed materials, for example, that I mentioned, were able to provide with some of the food services that we're providing residents, including our seniors. So what we have tried to do, or what we have done, is really pivot online and virtually as much as we can, but also finding those places where residents are interacting with the DC government and making sure that they're aware of the census and encouraging them to complete their forms. So we are, we're at about, just about 56%, and I think the US overall is just below, or just about at 60%, so we lag behind. But we have seen kind of a steady, a steady increase in that rate, and we believe that we can get it up over the next few weeks and months.
That's 56% of the online responses?
That's total responses, both online and, and some people actually did receive paper forms, so it's those as well, and, and the phone.
But the national average is about 60%, you said, or just above 60%?
That is correct.
Oh, that is concerning. The, what major planning initiatives, including small area plans, has OP anticipated advancing in 2021?
A number of the small, I'm sorry, you asked about the area planning efforts or all of our planning efforts?
Planning initiatives, including small area plans.
So let's talk about area planning. And I use area planning because I think there are, you know, small area plans are one tool, but we're finding that there could be other tools for different areas. So we will be continuing work in Congress Heights that we've started. It's been a little bit delayed because of COVID-19, but that is, is going now and will be continuing through next year, including looking at how the crisis, how the crisis has affected, has affected the housing and housing stability in that area, as well as looking at some of the commercial needs and retail needs. We are continuing efforts in partnership with the National Capital Planning Commission at the Armed Forces Retirement Home, as well as the DDOT. Obviously, there's a major DDOT intersection there, as well as we are, we're still continuing to implement our Southwest Parks, our Southwest Resilience Parks effort, which is a, which is building on the Southwest Small Area Plan, but we received some money through our resilience work to redesign the parks in Southwest. So those are the primary, those are the, I think, some of the primary planning, the area-based efforts. We'll also be continuing our housing work. I think much of that will be in the guise of recovery efforts. Obviously, the housing market is very unstable right now. We're monitoring that and figuring out what, and worry, and thinking about what, what will need to be done to address, address that, as well as, you know, continuing to support all of the reopening and recovery efforts.
I'm over my time. I do have some more questions. We'll come back. Councilmember Che, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I do want to talk about Chevy Chase and the small area plan there, but, but your testimony and your answers to the chairman, Mr. Trueblood, prompted something for me to also ask you. I'm very keen, you know, on the reopening of DC, that we may have some different plans for how we use the public space, and I know that's DDOT, but you all are such experts at planning and design and that sort of thing. We can use the public space, I think, better, you know, in terms of our businesses and our restaurants. I've seen other cities do this. There are designs out of Chicago and other, other cities where the public space is used especially for outdoor dining or for waiting areas for businesses, so that people aren't crowding in a store all at once. Do you have any role to play in that if we proceed with some sort of legislation to expedite how businesses can use the public space, or how cyclists and pedestrians can use the public space, including portions of the roadway? Would you have any role in, in sort of planning that?
Certainly. As background, too, I was able to help work with the Steering Committee on the reopen efforts, and was happy to see that their recommendations included very much what you spoke about. I've been in contact with Director Meridian, as well as his team, and my team has been working with him almost daily on many of these efforts. I must say, one of the kind of teams that we have at OP that folks might not know about is our design team. And they did things, for example, when the farmers markets, when that waiver process came up, they actually created sample floor plans, or layouts, I should say, that farmers markets could use and see what we were looking for. That team has also been working with DDOT on potential layouts, on how we think about passageways and hand washing stations, and how you put that all together, and how you could put that, put together a plan that the district could review. So that's worth mentioning. We also have, one of our staff members is on the Public Space Committee, so we have an ongoing relationship with the Public Space Committee in DDOT. So we have been working on that. We're very supportive, and we want to do whatever we can to help DDOT, and especially help our businesses figure out how to begin reopening and operating in this new environment, but in a safe way.
Okay, so that's essentially as an adjunct to DDOT. DDOT will be the principal player, though, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. I made an opening statement, and I focused on something maybe hyper-local, but, and the chairman mentioned some other plans. I want to talk about the small area plan for Chevy Chase. And we have something that's kind of, I don't know, an aligning of different aspects that make this actually an opportune time to think about this. If we had a small area plan for Chevy Chase in fiscal 2021, we could get the increased density proposed by the Future Land Use Map, and that would possibly be more palatable to residents because, and by the way, you may hear a cat in the background. I'm very sorry. He's, he's, he's a little crazy. He's very old, and he yells. And I can't keep him out of this area because he'll yell even louder. In any event, this Future Land Use Map and, you know, the desire for increased density for housing, and particularly affordable housing, and then it could include, could have that, but it could also include this coming together of these two projects in Chevy Chase, the community center and also the library. They're right next to each other. It could be done, you know, as part of, you know, a single project. But now here's, here's where the questions come in for you. I see that the mayor's budget includes a $275,000 cut to neighborhood planning, and previously, the chairman asked you about what a small area plan for Chevy Chase might cost. I've heard this number thrown around a lot, about the $250,000, but maybe you could speak about that in the context of this. Is that proposed funding in the proposed budget of $1.8 million for neighborhood planning sufficient to cover the cost for a small area plan for Chevy Chase? And I have other areas, and you've heard about other areas. Could you tell me about what consequences that will have if that money is cut from the budget?
Yes, so I'll start off by saying, you know, we're very excited by the possibilities of Chevy Chase. I think it's been alluded to, but it's worth mentioning that the capital budget had already included money to redo the Recreation Center, or the Community Center, and was added additional money to do the library, which I think gives us a chance to think, take a step back and think about really a beautiful civic space there, as well as the opportunity potentially for housing. So, you know, that's exciting, and as you mentioned, there's also, but you want to think about how that relates to the broader community, to that broader gateway area, which is why in the proposed generalized policy map, we both, we changed the land use a little bit, but more importantly, we put the, that, what we call the lasso, but we lasso it as a future planning area. For that very reason, we recognize that. I would be hesitant, excuse me, to begin a process of planning prior to that being passed and approved by council. I think that, you know, because that's, because there's so much going on there, we would really want councils sign off and buy in to that, but insofar as-
The sign off and buy in on which part?
On, on, well, the whole comp plan, but especially the Future Land Use Map and the Generalized Policy Map are two of the pieces that would, that really drive a lot of the kind of forward-looking planning efforts that we're thinking about. And that's whether you're talking, whether you're talking about that area or New York Avenue, I think we'll want, you know, we don't want to be, move ahead of council, given that the comp plan is-
Excuse me, so I understand this sort of timeframe. We may take this up in the fall, Mr. Chairman. I hope I'm not presuming something here, but in the fall, and so you might get the sign off that you're talking about. But we're talking about the budget for 2021, and I want to know if you get the sign off, if we go forward, do, will we have enough money to do this small area plan for Chevy Chase?
I think for all of our small area plans, we're thinking about how to do them in-house. And so if it happens, if this, if this does get passed, I think we would start in FY 21 with our in-house expertise to help get us through, insofar as we need additional contracting or additional support, which we may not need, that would likely come in FY 22.
Okay, and then this relates also to, you know, other parts of the Ward. The proposed comprehensive plan submitted to the council also calls for small area plans for Connecticut Avenue Corridor from Cleveland Park through Chevy Chase, and for Wisconsin Avenue, that corridor from Cathedral up to Friendship Heights. Would those be two small area plans, those particular ones? Or would there be several small area plans, combine the small area plans? How, how do you envision that?
That's, I think, part of the purpose of, we call them future planning areas. So we don't necessarily define exactly the boundaries or what the needs are. I think we would take an assessment, as you imply. Some areas, like Chevy Chase, might be very different than other areas of the same, within that same area, like Cleveland Park. So we are very interested, we would be, as part, once the comp plan is passed, we would then begin looking at how to scope each of these. And I think, I want to kind of reiterate that we're looking at how do we create area planning efforts that are really targeted to the questions and the needs of the residents, ones that can be done, completed in less than three years, which is about the time it took for a small area plan from kickoff to passage by council, that are maybe a little bit more nimble, and ones that we can, we can use work that's already been done. So we've already done, for example, a public life study in Penley Town. So how can that roll in to a potential planning effort in that area? So we're trying to use, we're trying to really think about how we can use what we've done, and also the scoping, to make sure that we can get area planning efforts that are targeted and a little bit more nimble.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm still within my time, but, but I, but I think I'm done for now. And I'll also say, I have a COG hearing that I need to participate in and some other matters, so I may be leaving and not be available for the, for the other witnesses. So I apologize for that, but thank you for taking my questions to this point, and thank you, Director.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you, Councilmember Che. Councilmember Barnes, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I have a few questions, and I want to start by thanking the director for his testimony this morning, and being so nimble in his thought process about many of these issues that we are very concerned about. I want to continue in talking a little bit about the small area plans and just get a clear understanding on how we are using the small area plans. In fact, what, what small area plans has the agency targeted for FY 21? And that is, are these plans in progress of development, or have they been completed and ready for implementation? And if you could give me the names of the areas, that would be very helpful.
Great. So we have not, we only have one real small area, well, maybe two small area planning efforts, or area planning efforts underway right now. In many ways, as I shared with Councilmember Che, we're waiting for our council to approve the comp plan before we can really start that next round of small area plans. So Congress Heights is beginning. We had planned to kick it off in March. Obviously, other things happened in March, but that is something that we're starting now. We've been working with community organizations on, and will be continuing and completing in FY 2021. We also have the- We also have the Southwest Resilience Parks Study. That is underway now. And that's going to help, that will help create concept designs, concept park designs for Southwest. So those are the major planning efforts that are underway prior to the, area planning efforts prior to the council approving the updated, or approving an updated comp plan.
Okay, do you have other plans that are completed and ready for implementation there at your office?
The comp plan?
No, small area plans. I know, we'll talk about the comp plan, but I want to have a clear understanding.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I forgot, I failed to mention two others. So we are working with DEMPED as well, CNHED, on a Deanwood Economic Development, Community Economic Development Plan. So that's not a small area plan, but it's like, it's in the suite of tools. It's an important one where there may not be as much need for physical planning, but other kinds of planning. So we are working on that. And then the other one that's underway and is a kind of a long-term effort is really that, what we're calling North Capital Crossroads, Armed Forces Retirement Home, Catholic University, the medical center area, and really thinking about how that will all take shape over the coming generations. So those are the ones that are underway as well. And AFRH, and that, that North Capital Crossroads, I think, will be a multi-year effort.
Okay, that's very important. I wanted to make sure that I, the music to my ears was clear and loud about North Capital is such a huge challenge. Okay, wanted to make sure. Now, you also indicated that there are some plans, small area plans, that may be on the shelves in your office. There, we have, let me, look, over the years, there've been many plans that we have done across the city. I have participated in at least three different versions in three different communities. And so I want to know, what has, what has happened to these plans? How did they just, you know, put forth an effort, everyone, yah, rah rah rah, and then they're stored away? Multiple budget cycles occur and we don't get the plans. And so I'm trying to understand what happens to this process. And this is important when we start talking about money and we talk about the allocation in each budget cycle, because people are wondering, you heard from Fairlon as an example today, and there are many other examples. And I guess when all is said and done, Mr. Director, it just, you know, I have an appreciation for your holistic understanding of all of the neighborhoods that make the city. But when, I think what has transpired in our lifetime here recently, make it very, very clear that equity doesn't, is missing from much of what we do and the allocation of dollars. And just wondering, how can we begin to make these things right? You, you talk about how you're now exploring the food policy. I want to know, what does that really mean in the grand scheme of things? And you say, well, we've done quite a bit on farmers markets. But when I look at the neighborhood that I grew up in, and I look at where my mom lives over in Wood Seven, she doesn't have many choices, if any. And, and then I hear my colleague asking about a part of the city that has many choices. And we're, I notice the yin and the yang and the pressing. So I'm just wondering if we, as a community, Washington DC, District of Columbia, have any lessons that we have gained from the current emergency that will inform us as to what we should be moving forward towards and can actually implement?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think there's a lot, there's a lot there that you asked about. And so I'm going to try to touch it all, but insofar as I miss something, please let me know. So as it relates to the, the kind of myriad of small area plans that were completed really from the mid-2000s, the mid-aughts to the mid-2018s, all of those, I would say, I would agree with you. Some of them were more successful than others. I think we found successful ones where the, the, the recommendations were, had lots of buy-in, not only from district government agencies, but from the community and residents and businesses who could move and use it to forward what they're doing. But not all of them were, were as successful. All of that being said, the small area plans have been, insofar as they still need to be incorporated into the existing comp plan update that's before council. So the way that we see it is, as the comp plan gets updated, we now begin a new generation of planning efforts. And I think, to your point, and if you look at my testimony, there's a critical word when I talk about our next generation of planning efforts, and I say, implementable. It is incredibly important to me that we both capture the vision of the community, but we also ground it in things that we believe can happen. Making a series of promises that you cannot keep or are hard is not necessarily successful. And I'm not saying we've done that, but what I think it is important to say is, well, here's a big shot idea, a big, big moonshot idea, or a big idea that is going to be hard, but we believe in it and we want it to happen. But understanding that there are all sorts of things that may or may not make it happen. And I think being honest and truthful and leveling with all of those people who spend time thinking about this, saying that it's, it is, it's incredibly important that we come together for a vision. But how that comes about is, may become complicated. And being honest about what we think can happen now and in the future, I think is something that will be a part of all of our future planning efforts. So you mentioned the Food Policy Council. And I think it's critical, oh, sorry, one more thing. Equity, you mentioned, is, I think, one of the most important updates that we have provided in this comp plan update. You know, we were talking, we added a whole section about health equity even before this crisis that is even more important now. You know, the DC Health was thinking about this a few years ago, and we were excited to be thought partners, even thinking about health equity and how things like housing and health are interrelated prior to this crisis. But this crisis has really just shown that, I think, to even more people. And hopefully gives us an opportunity to seize that and really work to address some of those, those root causes. Also, I was excited just to note that the mayor's budget is formulated around those four values, health, opportunity, prosperity, equity. Those actually came out of some of our comp plan efforts. But equity is something that we hope, that does kind of underline much of what we're thinking about. So finally, on food policy, I would just say, it's an incredibly important piece of what they do. Food access is a critical, critical question. So while they did implement the farmers markets waiver process, they are thinking much further about that. They were at the Emergency Operations Command, helping determine how to get free lunches out to students as soon as schools closed. They've been thinking about food access for senior populations across the city. They're doing, working on a food insecurity study, thinking about how food access will continue, working on ensuring that SNAP can be used by vendors and delivery companies too. So they are very much thinking about these issues.
Mr. Chairman, I see that I am out of time, but if you have another round, I do have a couple more questions.
Yes, there'll be a second round.
Thank you.
So let me see if I can get more budget-related questions in. The overall amount of funding for consultant services OP has for FY21 is not clear. OP is moving about $335,000 in funds from Controller Source Group 40 to CSG 41 to provide, quote, "greater flexibility in contracting," unquote. But it is not clear how those funds can or will be used. Could you please explain?
Yep. So those funds are for our, the historic preservation contracts and outreach that I mentioned, that we, that we use. So it's just putting it into more, in a more appropriate CSG group. It's just transferring those, and I believe they're special purpose revenues.
Okay. Can you provide me, as a follow-up to this hearing, with an itemization of your special purpose funds? When I say yours, I mean the Office of Planning. And what I would like is, and I assume this is going to require assistance from your agency fiscal officer, a statement for each SP fund. I don't know how many you have.
One.
One?
Yep.
That'll be easy. You said you have only one SP fund?
I believe that's the only, the only one, the Historic Preservation Fund.
And there are no others? Well, your AFO will, what do I say? Be sure. The, if the statement could be 2018, 2019, 2020, and FY2021, so obviously that would be projected with the beginning and ending balance.
Okay.
Are there opportunities for the Office of Planning to receive external funds from philanthropic or other partners?
Yes. That is something that we've already been talking about. We do, for example, have an existing grant with Kresge for some place-making initiatives that we're using in Congress Heights and Deanwood, for example, thinking about how we can pivot some of those to be, to address some of the questions that we're faced with the crisis, especially around things like public space and what that looks like. So we are looking for private opportunities to leverage private philanthropic or other dollars to do planning efforts.
And could you say more with regard to the housing initiative? So the Office of Planning is doing some analysis of affordable housing, and I believe you also are taking the lead at the Council of Governments. Could you, do I have that right? And could you explain a little bit without using up all my time?
So, yeah, the big push for the Office of Planning was this last year with the Housing Equity Report internally that was produced in October, and then the Council of Government supporting their resolution that was passed last September. Now, it is much, it is to the point, to the question of implementation. I would say much of our effort has been thinking about how that translates into, for example, the comp plan. So Councilmember Bonds, you mentioned some of the work up at Chevy Chase. We see that being a part of our housing and our housing equity efforts. If it means that we can produce affordable housing above the library and the, the community center, for example, creating or affordable senior housing, even, you know, even as importantly. So I think that that is where a lot of our energy has been focused. In addition, implementing things through, for example, the Inclusionary Zoning Plus proposal that we're hoping will be set up in, will be set up in time for council by the time they pass the future land use map, so that we can make sure we're getting as much affordable housing as possible. So it really is moving into those really more implementing tactical questions, with the caveat too, that COVID, I think, is, is, is just causing a lot of uncertainty. As I mentioned, we're monitoring the markets regularly. It's interesting to note that housing is not, has not had as big of a challenge yet as we've seen on the business side, especially the retail side. But we think it's probably a lagging indicator, unlike in 2009 where it was the leading kind of challenge. So we are continuing to monitor that and look at how that compares to what we were planning to do and to the equity metrics that we were looking at.
So the, that's helpful. So the big work, well, there's a lot of work going on now, you just explained, but the big work in a sense with the analysis was culminated with the Housing Equity Report last fall. Any further analysis being done, or it's just pretty much on the implementation side?
I think there's, so there was analysis that was done for that. There was analysis that was done for the comp plan. And then, you know, analysis that is ongoing for the IZ plus work. So I think much of our analysis will be focused on that more zoning land use side. But we continue to do analysis, that's sort of one of our strengths, I guess, around, you know, thinking about, and working with COG, for example, around what do projections look like after we get out of this in terms of population and housing, for example.
Let me shift the subject. Do you have any vacancies in your agency right now?
One.
And are you filling that, or is it frozen?
It is frozen.
And next year's budget takes the money or leaves the money?
Next year's budget requires $330,000 in vacancy savings, so I think it needs that money.
How much in vacancy savings?
$330,000.
Are you fully staffed to accomplish your mission?
Yes.
Let me see. While OP has the same number of FTEs as in FY20, the current fiscal year, there are a number of small moves in FTEs between OP's programs. For instance, adding staff to citywide planning in the state data center while reducing development review and neighborhood planning. Why do we need to add to the state data center? And why is it a good thing to be reducing development review and neighborhood planning, especially when you're doing more of that in-house?
I would categorize all of those changes as paper changes. They did not change any of our staffing of any of our divisions. It was more of a, kind of a fiscal exercise, just making sure that our staff were aligned in the right places.
All right, I touched on this earlier, but I'm going to bring it up again. Regarding the comprehensive plan, as a long-range planning document, do you see any need for extensive updates? Our questions regarding the long-term impacts, is the pandemic better addressed in the future overhaul of the comp plan or now? This is asking in a different way, what we talked about at the beginning.
Yeah, so I'll answer that because I have a pretty strong belief, a pretty strong view on this, which is, I think this comp plan does an incredible job of being able to adapt to the existing issues. As I mentioned to Councilmember Bonds, it, it talked about health equity before, you know, national press was talking about health equity. It talked about equity and resilience and all of these critical issues. One of the things that we did was broaden the language. I think much of our focus on shocks and stressors of the resilience work were around natural disasters. So we expanded to include things like public health emergencies and crises. But I think this comp plan stands up to that. And I really challenge, I challenge anybody to show a place where our proposal to the council does not. That being said, I think we are in a new world and it is shifting under us. We don't know what our new normal is. And I don't think it's appropriate to start a new planning effort until we stabilize, and that is probably years away and probably lines up with a whole new comp plan. So I think the timing is now, and it's right, and it should be now. And the next comp plan will address that new, you know, the new world, once we know what that looks like.
I have about five more questions, so I'm going to have another round. Councilmember Che, if you're still there. Councilmember Bonds, do you have, you said you had some additional questions?
Yes, thank you very much. I, I wanted to, of course, commend Director True Blood for the critical work that you did as a part of the mayor's reopen DC committee. And I wanted to know, and through that process, what did you learn that you can bring to the Office of Planning as we look at this new budget for FY21? And then I also want you to talk a little bit about a couple of the price points that are included in your budget. But if you could just sort of give me an indication as to how, moving forward, there are lessons learned that we can bring to this budget process. You mentioned a little bit about equity and the idea of healthy housing, but what does that really mean? Because the public has some very clear ideas as to what we should be doing as it relates to housing, given the pandemic.
Yeah, that's, thank you for the question. I would say, I would put the, I would categorize two ways that we've learned. And it's worth mentioning, while I was working daily, regularly with the Steering Committee, members of the Office of Planning were kind of helping across different committees and helping with the effort too. So I think we, as an agency, learned a lot. And I think the most valuable thing that we learned was how to think about ways of engaging residents in this time of social distancing. We used, we had an incredibly popular online survey filled out by, we had over 17,000 respondents. Figured out how to use, create a telephone line for those who may not have internet access and create surveys that were in multiple languages. Also to lever, to use all of our community members to get feedback from their communities. And that could be not only residents, but for example, different types of businesses that they may know about. The Restaurant Association, for example, was able to get a lot of feedback that was really valuable. And I think we learned a lot. We also used a new kind of tool to analyze all of that data and help give that information to the committees. And so these are the things, I mean, that's what excites me about reopen DC in terms of the process. I also think there's a lot of content there that's very important and things that we will be mostly supporting on moving forward. The digital divide is a good example of recognizing that in this world, you know, not all students have broadband access, not all seniors have devices or comfort using that. So it is both internet access, it is how you get, how you get, how you, the device you use as well as maybe training, which I think is a really a critical equity concern. As I shared with Councilmember Che, we're very much working hand in hand with DDOT and ABRA and DCRA and others to think about what our public spaces look like and making sure that we're supporting our small businesses. So I think those are kind of some of the big content takeaways that we're thinking about from the reopen effort. One other, I guess, final piece is OP has already been taking the lead on, for example, looking at farmers markets. And I think we may be also reviewing other types of businesses for their plans as they reopen.
Thank you very much. I really wanted the public to understand that the Office of Planning is very comprehensive in its approach in dealing with the agencies throughout the government. And as you have responded to Chairman Mendelson, that your budget as presented is adequate for you to get the work done. I just wonder if there are some areas where you may be lacking. I know telephone lines, you mentioned that, and I don't know if that means you're going to maintain or help to maintain hotlines in various agencies for collecting of data. You know, we always get anecdotal data, as we call it, at the, from constituents within our council offices. And I'm sure the mayor's office gets it well. But it would be very useful if there was a way to record that information and to have it available as we move forth, maybe even quarterly, in discovering what it is that we really need to pay close attention to so that we don't have situations like we have today where everyone is saying that the reason we have shootings in certain parts of the city is because those communities feel unrepresented as it relates to having the resources that they need. So maybe we can get on top of some of these issue areas, you know, a little faster if we have data coming in constantly. And so I wonder if you do have enough resources to do your job because you're doing a fabulous job, in my opinion. The budget includes $211,000 increase for performance management. This is significantly larger than in three previous fiscal years. Can you tell me what, is this one way you're going to use the money to help to stay on top of what constituents are saying? Or how is this money going to be used?
First of all, thank you, Councilmember Bonds. I think to your first point about feedback, I think while we have likely the budget to be able to do feedback as it relates to our small area plans and our area planning efforts, thinking about a broader enterprise tool, I think is something, is a really interesting idea and maybe something that we can investigate for the future. As it relates to performance management, that was one of the changes that really was just realigning our staff. So we put two of our staff members into that, into that bucket, I guess you would say. So it's just a moving PS, personal services money from one bucket to another.
Okay, so the bucket where the money came from was a bucket that was doing what?
So we moved our chief of staff, who was in, for some reason, was partially in legal and partially in comms. We moved our chief of staff to that performance management. And we also, that's where we put our, I'm sorry, oh yeah, yeah. We added our chief of, part of our chief of staff, and then our food policy council director is in that, in that category as well.
Okay, now you talked a lot about the food policy and how important that is and what a big discovery we have made during this health emergency that there are so many communities that have really needed some attention. I wonder if you also would think about how we can look at housing as 0 to 30% AMI. That has been a constant refrain whenever we talk with community about affordability. And just wondered if you would give some thought to whether or not we actually need a bona fide study on that. The budget that the mayor has proposed is very robust in the sense that it continues to say yes to affordability and housing, but it's very, very shallow when we talk about 0 to 30%. Yet, those voices that we've heard recently about the need for food are the same voices we're going to hear if you have an opportunity to talk to them about 0 to 30% housing needs. And, and that leads you to some conclusion about what is the city going to look like as we move into the future? How many units of what type and what income will we be able to afford, given the budget constraints? I mean, we're going to be constrained a little bit for the next two or three years. And who knows, those that are here today may decide that somewhere in Arkansas is more attractive and they all run off there and raise their families. So I'm just wondering, you know, if you would give some thought to that and chat with me about it, I would greatly appreciate it.
Of course, I'd be happy to chat with you about it. I'd like to assure you that we have given lots of thought to it. We talk about the needs at that level a little bit in the Housing Equity Study, as well as COG. Some of the work that we've worked at the Council of Governments with looks at it both DC and region wide, so.
But have you put any money into it? Where is there money in this budget towards 0 to 30%? That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't feel prepared to give you the best, most accurate answer for the housing budget. I think, you know, our housing agencies would know the best in terms of what their budget asks are.
Oh yes, no, they will be examined. I'm speaking of, you know, as you're thinking from the plateau of planning, what does that mean?
Yeah, I think, I was going to say, while we don't have budget asks, I think we do have some critical things before council that are important to reach that. That critical thing being the comp plan. The future land use map creates additional opportunities for density. For example, with the housing authority, who can leverage that to create more housing opportunities or preserve housing opportunities where they might be struggling to do so today. We worked very closely with them on all of their properties to help make sure that they can build the housing that they need for current and future residents. So I think that the Housing Authority is one example. They're the best example because they're almost solely focused on 0 to 30. But I think there are other places too, whether you're looking at district land or even private partners and nonprofits that are interested. Creating that value in the land allows us to create, to either create more affordable housing or in some cases, create deeper subsidies.
And we're way over our time and I apologize to the chairman, but this is a real important area of concern. And I really want to see where the planning office dollars are focused towards this because when I look at the housing budget, the Housing Authority, it's not there. So anyway, thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonds. A few more questions. In the area of historic preservation, has the Office of Planning seen changes in the number of discretionary review cases and historic preservation cases submitted?
I don't, I don't think so, but I can follow up with the specific numbers on what's been submitted recently.
Okay, and when you do follow up, would you also give me what your projections are or estimates are with regard to an increase or decline in FY 21?
For discretionary, discretionary HP reviews.
Discretionary and cases as well. So there are discretionary review and then there are formal cases. Could you also do that with regard to other development review services?
Yep, and I can tell you, I have before me, there has been no slowdown in PUD applications of yet, as of yet. So I know that's the case, but I'll have to look at the discretionary HP cases.
You say there's been no slowdown in PUD cases?
No, you know, PUDs are not, it's not a, they're not, it's not a very huge number. But we have continued to see PUD cases being filed and applied for. So we, so far, it has not slowed down.
Well, there was a high in, I'm going to say 2016 or 2017.
Right.
And then a significant drop, I'll say in 2018. Have they gone back up or it's just held steady?
I would say it's held steady or gone up a little bit, not, it has not gone up to the 2018 numbers. And I wouldn't expect it to until the new future land use map is passed. I think, from what I understand, a whole, a number of potential applicants are waiting for that.
Well, I was going to ask you, have we, have we, are we past the crisis, the PUD crisis?
I would say, I think, I would suggest we're, let me put it this way. Once Bruce Monroe decision happens, I would say, if that happened, if we get a ruling on Bruce Monroe that is favorable, I would suggest that we've passed it. I think we're all waiting for that. It does seem, we have received a number of other favorable rulings and clarity from the courts. So it does seem like a number of, we've, we've passed the worst, but I don't think, I think there's still challenges that we're dealing with, still cases we're dealing with, but also clarity in the comp plan. The framework, I think, was a good first step. And I think the future land use map will kind of be a really important step to get through this.
That was a long answer too, what sounded like to me like a yes or no, are we past the crisis? So there have been a number of favorable appeal decisions, appeal court decisions. There have been no unfavorable appeal court decisions. There were unfavorable in the eyes of the zoning commission or the, or your agency. But even though there have been no unfavorable decisions, you're not willing to say yes definitively, we're past the crisis?
That's, that's correct, in part because it's a risk situation. A land, an applicant will, does, even if, even if we've had a number of favorable decisions, if they still think that they might get appealed or lose, they might not move forward. And so I think there will always be that risk there. There will always be the opportunity to appeal. But helping, helping everyone know what the rules of the road are and the timeline and giving a little bit of security around that, I think, well, is what we need in order for me to feel comfortable saying we're past the worst of it all.
Okay, interesting answer. I mean, the difference between a PUD and matter of right is that a PUD is discretionary. And being discretionary means it's subjective, and being subjective means that there is going to be some risk. I mean, it's just inherent, unless we want to make PUDs a matter of right, but I'm not quite sure what that looks like. The, all right, but you'll get back with regard to whether there's been a decrease in the number of discretionary review cases and historic preservation review cases, as well as the zoning review services, not only in the moment, but what you estimate or project for next year?
Okay, yes, we will, we will get back to you on those.
Could you confirm that the proposed OP budget retains historic homeowner grant program?
Yes, it does.
As to his funding level of $250,000?
Yes.
What's the funding source?
Local, I believe. Yeah, it's local.
Was the Office of Planning able to successfully increase applications and grant dispersments?
So that is, we were on track to do that. Obviously, I think with, with the COVID crisis, it put, you know, it slowed down all sorts of activities, including construction activities and the ability to get grants out. We have about $100,000 that's either been expended or is obligated. And we're about to award seven grants now that, I think, now that we're seeing construction activity being able to pick up seven grants for about $150,000. So we do expect to spend a little over $250,000 in FY 2020.
You expect to spend a little over 250, is that what you said?
That is correct.
Are there any vacancies on the HPRB board?
Yes.
How many?
Two. It's an architect and our archaeologist.
And where are we with filling those?
We are working, the Mayor's Office of Talent Appointments is working to fill those. I think, as you might appreciate, finding a DC resident archaeologist who is willing to commit the amount of time required for HP meetings is not a small task. And so it has taken longer than we would have liked.
But that's been true since 1978.
That's correct. If I, if I had the opportunity to change federal law, I would.
Okay, only in this matter or other? So are we in jeopardy by, because of our federal requirements, are we in jeopardy because we have these two vacancies?
We've been working closely, you know, it is, it is something that I am concerned about. We've been working to make sure that the NPS knows that we're working to fill these and that we're, you know, we're sharing with them our progress. So I think we're okay. I think they understand for now, but it is something that we are really focused on filling.
The mayor in the proposed budget moved the capital funding for the H Street Bridge farther out. Are you familiar with what's going on there?
I am familiar with what's going on in the area, as, I think, you know, I'm not familiar with the timing of the H Street Bridge.
Well, let's talk about then, you are familiar though with some of the issues. I think I had asked you recently for a copy of your correspondence with, was it NCPC or FRA? I think you gave me one, but not the other.
That's correct. So we shared a letter with FRA expressing our, our strong concerns about their existing alternative in their NEPA, in their, in their process, their EIS, their environmental impact statement, sorry for the jargon. So we shared that with you. We also, at the same time, shared a report that backs that up. It includes research and precedence and other things for why, the other research for why, for the amount of parking that we suggest, which is, you know, more like 300 spaces rather than 1,575 spaces. So we shared that with NCPC. NCPC gave us some feedback, including talking once more with the private developers of the Burnham Place, as well as the FRA giving them an opportunity. talking once more with the private developers of the Burnham Place, as well as the FRA, giving them an opportunity to weigh in one more time. So we are in that process right now, gathering feedback, and we can adjust our report as needed prior to final submission to NCPC.
I got lost for a second. You're submitting a report to NCPC?
So we submitted, I would call it a draft report. We're getting feedback right now from FRA, USRC, as well as Accridge and the Burnham Place team. And then we will submit our final report to NCPC, which will be public and we can share that.
So the reason why you didn't share the correspondence was because?
It's still, we're still drafting it. We're still working on it and get, gathering feedback from NCPC, FRA, and Accridge.
Are you required to submit a report to NCPC, or you just think that's the most effective way to advocate for what would be the best plan?
So NCPC's passed a resolution in January directing the Office of Planning to submit a report. I don't know if they can require OP to do it, but OP was certainly, as I testified at NCPC, we were willing to do it. So we, we are interested in, in meeting their request.
And when will you file that report?
In the coming weeks, prior to, prior to USRC reporting back to NCPC.
Give me a better sense of timing. The NCPC meeting in June?
We can, I'll, I'll have to get back to you on what NCPC's calendar is. I think our, we're, our calendar is driven by theirs.
Okay, so you'll let me know. Is there anything in the budget, your budget for the Commemorative Works Committee?
No, that would be using our staff.
And you have the ability to do that?
Yes.
And are you working on reorganizing, rethinking the Commemorative Works Committee?
Yes, we are continuing to think, to work on that. There was all great plans. We, we were working in the spring to put together a new kind of vision and approach. That got a little bit delayed because of what's happening, but we're continuing to move forward with it. That's another program that's being led out of our design team. And we are very interested in putting together a more holistic approach and, and also to encouraging organizations to, to, to utilize, to think about how they can apply for, for commemorative works and commemorate various experiences throughout the city.
This would involve or require legislative changes, would it not?
I think for now, we can work within the existing legislation. But as shared at the discussion on the updated legislation at the hearing, I think there are opportunities to improve it and align it more with how we work today in the, in the district, rather than, it was kind of modeled on the federal program in the early 2000s. So I think there are opportunities to modernize it, but our ability to move forward with some of the, some of the visioning and some of the documents and production that we want to do is not stymied by the existing legislation.
Okay. I think. I think I'm just checking to see if I have any other questions, suggestions from staff, and I don't see any. So I just want to end with this. For reasons I don't fully understand, the, you or the Office of Planning, but I think it was more you were tasked with corralling and ensuring order for the reopen DC task force, at least the steering committee. I wasn't able to be at all the meetings and you were at all the meetings. And I want to just take this moment to compliment you for your work. I think there was a lot of good stuff that was done, but it also was a lot of work. So thank you for that. And I think it was a good product.
Thank you, Chairman.
Let me just double check whether my colleagues, Councilmember Che or Councilmember Bonds, have any additional questions? Not to provoke another full 10 minute round. I see Councilmember Bonds saying no. So then, Mr. Trueblood, thank you. You're going to follow up on several things. Number of discretionary and cases and, and development review services. When you're going to file the report with NCPC, special purpose funds? And I think that was it.
And I'll continue, those, I have those, and I'll continue to talk to Councilmember Bonds about some of the housing issues she raised.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To turn to the next agency, which is the Office of Zoning. And I have three individuals, Sarah, Sarah Barton, who's the Director of the Office of Zoning, and Anthony Hood, who's Chair of the Zoning Commission, and Fred Hill, who's Chair of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Ms. Barton, how do you want to proceed?
I'm going to go ahead and read my testimony, and then Chairman Hood and Chairman Hill are here for answer, to answer questions as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Chairman Mendelson, Councilmember Che, Councilmember Bonds, and members of the City Council. My name is Sarah Barton, and I am the Director of the Office of Zoning. I am very glad to be here with you today to testify about our budget and goals for FY 2021. With me today are Chairman Hood of the Zoning Commission, Chairman Hill of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and ACFO Cassandra Fields. As I mentioned when I came before the City Council in February, I am honored to work with and lead this great team of diligent, hardworking individuals who devote themselves tirelessly to serving the public, the zoning commissioners, and the Board of Zoning Adjustment members. Since the beginning of the pandemic emergency, OZ has been working to make all of its services available to the public. Starting in April, the, the Zoning Commission and the BZA held virtual public meetings. And in May, the ZC held its first virtual public hearing. OZ will finally succeed in achieving full operations when the BZA returns to virtual public hearings on June 3rd. OZ will continue to carry its goal of creating a convenient, easy to use and understandable zoning process and leverage new and existing technology to further ensure that the zoning processes are understandable and accessible to the public throughout the pandemic, thus ensuring residents can fully participate in the zoning process. We believe that our goals for the next fiscal year will be well supported by the mayor's proposed budget of $3,255,669. With the approval of this budget, OZ will continue to do its best to strive to achieve results for the residents of the District of Columbia. In conclusion, I would like to express my sincere thanks to Mayor Bowser and to you, Chairman Mendelson, and the entire City Council for your ongoing support for the Office of Zoning. I would also like to express my gratitude to Chairman Hill and Chairman Hill, Chairman Hood and Chairman Hill for their unfaltering support of the office over the years, which has allowed us to accomplish so much and lay the groundwork to better serve the citizens of the District of Columbia. And lastly, I would again like to thank the staff of the Office of Zoning for their continued outstanding contribution and for keeping up with the many technological changes we are making to improve delivery of service, especially during these times. I am so proud that we have been able to work as a team to solve every challenge we have encountered. I am really fortunate to be surrounded by this incredible group of people. This, this concludes my testimony, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Does Mr. Chairman Hood or Chairman Hill have any comments, testimony, statements?
They do not.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and other councilmembers, Councilmember Bonds and all councilmembers who are listening. No, Mr. Chairman, I'm just here today to ask if you had any questions for us. We'll speak at that time.
Okay. I'm assuming the same is true for Mr. Hill. The budget has almost a 3% cut in your, cut from the current year. You didn't really speak to that, Ms. Barton, in your statement. Why, why is this going to be okay for your continuing operations?
Well, in light of what's happening right now, we felt that these cuts could definitely be made without reducing our level of service.
There'll be no impact at all, or are you doing some reshuffling or what?
Well, we're just, we're just going to tighten our belts a little bit. We've cut a little bit of our supply budget, a little bit of our computer hardware. We'll tighten up a little bit on some of our contracts, but I believe that we will be able to still function as well as we are functioning now with these, these cuts.
In the past, I've probed about a backlog in getting orders out. So where does that stand?
So during this pandemic, over the last two and a half months, since we have not been able to hold our virtual, our public hearings, we have been able to put a dent in the backlog. I would say for the BZA, at least half of the backlog has at least been drafted. Some of them have been issued, and for the zoning commission, I believe about half of them have been issued.
So what does that mean in actual numbers? I think I've asked you this before.
A roundabout number would be 30 for each. So I would put it around 15 for the zoning commission and somewhere thereabouts for the, have at least been drafted on the BZA side.
You confused me there.
Right. So there, there, there was a backlog of about 30 on each side. So I would say approximately, and I can get you the actual numbers later, but I believe about 15 have been drafted on the zoning commission side, leaving about 15 more. And approximately thereabouts for the, the BZA as well, about 17 have been at least drafted. Several have been issued, and there remains about 17 to be written.
Okay, if you would follow up with the exact numbers?
Yes.
And I think I've asked you this before as well, the age of these cases?
Right.
So if you could provide that information?
Absolutely.
Okay. The process of issuing orders now, is it more cumbersome because there are more lawyers?
No, no, it's, it's, it's helping. Right now, we actually have a vacancy. One of the attorneys last month resigned to move to Maryland, I mean, to work for Rockville. And so we are in the process of filling that vacancy. So we're short an attorney right now.
And that position is not frozen?
No, it, it will be filled. In fact, we plan on starting interviews probably next week.
So tell me exactly what the legal situation is, and I mean number of lawyers. Even though I was in the thick of this a year ago, at the moment, I can't remember. How many lawyers should there be available? And then how many of them are with you and how many are with the Attorney General?
We should have six. Three are currently with the Office of Zoning detailed back to the Office of the Attorney General, and three are in the Office of the Attorney General.
Okay, and would the plan was for 21, they were all going to be OZ?
We were driving for that, yes.
And that's been put on hold?
Yes.
Why?
I would imagine because of the budget, the budget issues that we're facing right now. So we will be requesting in the future that we receive these FTs again.
So that would be in the future, an increase of three FTs for you?
Right.
And is six enough?
I believe we can, we can make progress and work well with six, yes.
And is everybody working well together? Is the process working well?
Yes.
Now, every year, you have, your budget request has included a request for capital funding for technology. This year, meaning for FY 21, you're not?
Well, there was an allotment for 2020, it's been pushed off to, or 2021, excuse me. It's been pushed off to 2022, but we do have sufficient existing capital funds that will carry us through 2020.
Will carry you?
2021, excuse me.
So it's not like that, that capital initiative has ground to a halt. It will continue because you have sufficient funds?
Exactly.
What have the problems been, if any, with your virtual meetings?
Honestly, it, it has gone much better than I could have imagined. I, I said in my testimony that staff, they've just been incredible in foreseeing any issues that we may have, and we have basically solved them before we've gotten to the meetings or the hearings. I think the BZA public hearings will be the most difficult of all of the types of, of hearings that we had, hearings and meetings that we have. But we've been working really hard over the last couple of weeks to ensure that that goes smoothly as well. So I would say we haven't really had any.
That's good to hear. You haven't had any problems, no Zoom bombings or things like that?
No, we're, we're using WebEx, actually.
Okay. I don't, I asked you this caseload. Could you, me, as a follow up, when you follow up on the backlog of orders, also give me what the caseload has been and what you expect it will be. So maybe give me the caseload for, I'm going to say 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021.
Will do, yes.
Let me turn to my colleagues. I don't know if Councilmember Che is still with us. Councilmember Bonds, are you still with us? Give me just a moment, please. I have two more questions. The, do you have an outstanding draft MOU with the Office of the Attorney General?
For this year, yes, we drafted one, but it's not fully executed.
Why not?
I do not know.
Well, who hasn't executed it? You or OAG?
We drafted it and we sent it to OAG.
Could you get back to me and tell me why OAG has not signed it?
I sure can.
Give me just a second here. The other question I have is, are you comfortable in your space, physical space? I'm not asking any psychological questions here. Are you comfortable in your space? And what I'm, I think the genesis of this question is that you're supposed to, at some point, be getting those additional attorneys. And then I think you won't be comfortable in your space. And so you're supposed to be having discussions with DGS about new space. So there's several parts to this. Are you comfortable in your space? What do you need when those attorneys come over? And explain your discussions with DGS.
So we are comfortable in our space, and when those attorneys come, or if they come, we would just be requesting space somewhere in the building for the six attorneys to sit. So they don't have to sit within our suite. It would just be anywhere in the building that fit space could be found. And so, you know, right now, when we know that we're going to have the need, we will continue to talk to DGS about it.
So the fact that it's not in the budget for FY21 means the discussions with DGS are not urgent. But had they, were they going along well? How would you characterize those discussions?
Absolutely. Yes, the discussions were great, and they had, when I first asked about it, when we were requesting the additional FTE, they were very open to looking to see where they could find space within the building. So yes, they were great.
But they had not found the space, and now it's been put on hold?
Right.
Correct?
Right.
I do not have any other questions for you. Sorry, Chairman Hood and Chairman Hill, I don't have questions for you. You know, they muted their videos, so I can't really tell if, I see Mr. Y, there's Mr. Hood, okay, just checking. I do not have any further questions, but there were several things you were going to follow up on.
Yes.
Yes, Chairman Hill.
Since I bothered putting on a jacket today, I might mention, you know, for the record, I really would like to thank again, you know, the mayor and yourself and the council as a citizen and as a small business owner for all the work you guys have done during this pandemic. And I, again, really do mean it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Since my colleagues here, something I'll just say, I really appreciate you all taking the time to hear our budget requests, and we support it. The budget request from the mayor has proposed, and also I want to thank the council, because I, actually, we also watched the council when they did their virtual hearings, and you all very successful, and we pattern after you all, even though I think we might have perfected a little better, but we pattern after you all, so thank you.
I'm sorry, was there a little competitiveness there, Mr. Hood?
No, but you all set the mark for us to try to achieve.
Thank you. All right, thank you, each of you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
So we'll turn now to the Director of the Department of Consumer and Regulatory Affairs, Ernest Trappa. Mr. Trappa, I believe you have a statement, and then I will have questions, and if my colleagues are here, they'll have questions as well.
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Bonds, Councilmember Che, and staff. I am Ernest Trappa, Director of the Department of Consumer and Regulatory Affairs. I do hope that all of you and your families are safe and healthy during these uncertain times. I'm here virtually today to testify on fiscal year 2021 budget for DCRA, and joined virtually also by Inu Goody, Agency Fiscal Officer. Last week, Mayor Bowser presented DC Hope: Health, Opportunity, Prosperity, and Equity Budget for Fiscal Year 21, which will mark the District's 25th consecutive balanced budget. This year's budget has taken into account the estimated loss of revenue due to COVID-19 pandemic, but continues to push ahead with the mayor's priorities of providing a more equal and equitable place to live and work for district residents. As part of the Bowser administration, and as a district resident myself, I would like to thank the mayor, his senior staff, and all district government employees for continuing to fulfill the commitment of providing residents with an equal and equitable place to call home, no matter one socioeconomic position. This charge is especially needed as we are in the midst of dealing with and recovering from the effects of COVID-19 pandemic. Given our mission, DCRA is an integral part of the district's work to create a level playing field, particularly in the areas of protecting consumers, helping residents start and grow businesses, and ensuring that additional housing units are built safely and quickly. When I became Director of this agency, I made a commitment to you and to the residents of the district that DCI was going to make a huge push to provide world-class customer service by improving accountability, transparency, and responsiveness, while also digitalizing the agency to better position ourselves in this ever-changing world. We put together a strategic plan to overhaul the agency by the end of 2020 calendar year, and I'm proud of the work we've accomplished thus far. And know that we are actively working towards completing all of our goals by year's end. Over the last year, we focused relentlessly on improving the agency's customer service and responsiveness to our residents and customers, something that has come up at previous hearings before the council. After piloting an online customer management system for almost a year, we have now fully transitioned to an enterprise customer relationship management system called KRM. Under this system, whenever a customer contacts DCRA, whether by phone, email, or through our website or social media, their issue is automatically logged into our system, routed to the appropriate division or team member. For those who have been tried it, I would encourage you to check out the live chat feature on our website that connects people with our staff in real time during regular business hours. Regardless of the customer's entry point, as soon as they contact us, the clock starts. Our staff is required to respond and resolve a customer's issue within three business days or less, something that is reflected in the performance plan of every DCRA employee. Some issues are obviously more complex and require numerous follow-ups over a longer period of time, but we are committed to getting a resolution underway immediately. And I am proud to share that of more than 43,000 inquiries we've handled over the past four months, 95% of inquiries were resolved in three days or less. Getting customer feedback to understand how well we deliver our customer service is essential in our effort to improve, sorry, to further improve customer service delivery. With this in mind, once an inquiry has been closed, we now send our customers a short survey to rate their experience with the agency as poor, satisfactory, or excellent, and then explain why. In April of this year, 57% of customers rated their interactions with DCRA as excellent, while 20% rated their experience as satisfactory. While we are working toward even higher satisfaction levels, I am pleased to say that even during these challenging times, we are providing nearly 80% of our customers with satisfactory or excellent service. I would like to take a moment now and give you the chance to hear from some of our customers in their own words, all of which was filmed over the last week.
When the homeowner's center opened, we were so excited because suddenly we had homeowners that had bought or sold and were saying to us, oh, my gosh, have you been to the homeowner's center? It, the process moved so much faster. I went in, I got my permit. Or I went in with a question, and they were able to answer the question and put me in the right direction. Start with DCRA now at the online, on the online platform, not just because of coronavirus, but because they've been putting things in place online before this ever happened, and really building the online platform, and it's a great place to start. It's got resources, and it directs you, it kind of gives you a roadmap to what to expect. And I think it really helps facilitate the process of getting your permits or understanding what steps you need to take with an architect or your builder.
There is an open-mindedness that wasn't always in place at DCRA because of how the agency was designed. I mean, realistically, you need to make sure that everyone is operating according to the rules and regulations and in compliance. However, we have felt over the last year and a half that there has been more of an alignment and partnership with the agency that really helps these businesses succeed, rather than just check a box and get something done on the agency side. In addition, I will say, you know, a very real tangible result is we have seen overall a larger concentration of timeline increasing in terms of people are able to open, and they are not delayed in the ways that they were once delayed in the past, mostly because of lack of streamlining. So now a restaurant operator has a little bit more of an idea around timeline, what is to be expected, and how they can plan in a way to reopen, or open, I should say, reopen is what we're all talking about, how they can plan to open where it's going to fit within the financial budget that they have laid out in opening a new restaurant.
My experience lately, pretty much for DCRA, is Cascade Apartments, and they never hesitate, they're just always there for the community, and I appreciate it. Over here at Ward Eight, there are a lot of blighted urriers. And I truly feel if you remove the blight, you can see a better side.
The majority of my encounters have happy endings. There are people who call back and say, thank you for, again, you know, making sure that inspector came to my house, it was timely, it helped. One lady who lives in Ward Eight was very grateful for the fact that we had stopped illegal construction occurring at her house, or nearby her house. It was going to affect her structural damage, and by us putting a stop work order, it saved a lot of pain and suffering.
We provide customers a service that's not always easy to understand. We issue permits and business licenses, and somewhere in the process, some customers find themselves being confused. I love when it starts and the customer is frustrated, but you can get them to a point of understanding. I feel like that makes my day, when I've been able to turn a situation around completely, and now the customer's satisfied. Our customers are absolutely amazing. Without them, DCRA would not be here. We definitely, I know I appreciate their patience, because DCRA is a lot to take in. And we don't always get it right, but they definitely give us the room to make the corrections, and we appreciate that. We appreciate them for sticking by us all of this time, and I hope that we begin to wow them and amaze them as we move forward.
Knowing that some issues are highly complex and require coordination within various divisions of DCRA, as well as our sister agencies, we have also now set up an account management system with an account manager assigned to each ward. Our account managers work closely with council staff, ANCs, and the residents and businesses within their wards to keep an open line of communications and solve problems. Part of good customer service is also staying nimble and adapting to changing circumstances. Within days of Mayor Bowser declaring a public health emergency in the district, DCRA was able to fully transition to providing all our services digitally. This includes processing applications and renewals for business licenses, approving plan and permit reviews, issuing certificates of occupancy, scheduling and conducting inspections, maintaining a robust enforcement presence, and converting previously planned in-person events to virtual events. Last month, DCRA successfully completed 97.8% of permit plan reviews in project docs in 30 days or less, issued over 3,500 permits, conducted more than 1,050 construction inspections, and processed 94% of new business licenses within one day. This is a testament to the great work of our staff, and shows how the investments we're making in technology have paid off. In the face of this pandemic, while other government agencies throughout the country that perform similar functions to DCRA have struggled, DCRA hasn't missed a beat. According to a national survey conducted by the International Code Council, 40% of agencies across the country do not have the capability to perform electronic or remote plan reviews. DCRA does. 30% of these agencies do not have the capability to perform electronic or remote permitting. DCRA does. 61% of these agencies do not have the capability to conduct remote inspections. DCRA does. DCRA, simply put, our focus on digitization has positioned the district very well for the current environment. As you can imagine, at the start of this crisis, many tenants were worried about DCRA inspectors entering their homes to conduct housing inspections. To balance this very real concern with a need to ensure that landlords maintain safe housing conditions, our inspection team quickly transitioned to conducting virtual inspections. Using their phones, tablets, or computers, tenants simply show our inspectors around the apartments, which gives us the documentation we need to take enforcement action. Naturally, some residents have had questions about the technology involved. In response, we are now hosting building-wide virtual town halls in buildings that are scheduled for proactive inspections. Our enforcement team walks residents through the types of issues inspectors commonly find, encourages residents to sign up to have their units virtually inspected, then explains step by step how the virtual inspections will be conducted and answer any questions they have. Throughout all of this, our staff has been resilient. With the exception of a handful of employees who still need to work in the field, such as our basement team, everyone else is now working remotely. Every day, I hold an all-staff WebEx meeting to provide updates and answer questions. These meetings, along with our project management and team collaboration software, have allowed us to stay connected and productive. Our culture change initiative also remains fully active with virtual one-on-one career counseling sessions for employees, and a range of tailored training sessions to meet the unique needs of specific teams. Far from slowing down since the pandemic, DCRA has launched two major products for our customers: Access DC and Scout. For those not familiar, Access DC allows residents to create a single account to access all of DCRA's online systems, while also being more secure. Scout is our new consolidated database management system that streamlines property and business data, allowing residents to more easily track permits, licenses, regulatory information, and other useful district data. In response to concerns that DCRA is not acting quickly enough to stop illegal construction in the district, we have developed new approaches that include the use of technology and other resources to decrease response time for illegal construction complaints. I am pleased to share that we've made significant gains in our response times for legal construction complaints. During the second quarter of fiscal year 19, we responded to legal construction complaints in less than two days, 44% of the time. But during the second quarter of fiscal year 20, we responded to complaints and conducted an inspection in less than two days, 67% of the time. This allows us to catch more bad actors and then add them to our growing database of bad actors, which are grouped by LOCs as well as location. With respect to housing code violations, we have continued to improve our proactive inspections program. Working with Georgetown University, we developed an algorithm that takes into account factors like a building's age, the landlord's history of code violations, to target where we send our inspectors. And as part of our work to increase transparency, using our agency dashboard, the public can now look at apartment buildings and see how many housing violations have been issued, and on those violations, how many repairs have been made. That's valuable information for a prospective tenant, I'm in there with information about bad landlords before they ever have to sign a lease. Let me now highlight Mayor Bowser's fiscal year 21 budget and our budget priorities. Overall, DCRA's fiscal year 21 total budget is $73.7 million, which is a 1.1 million decrease from $74.1. which is a one point one million decrease from seventy-four point eight million in fiscal year twenty. With no capital funding in fiscal year twenty-one from the six-year capital improvement plan, the operating budget proposal of seventy-three point seven million reflects an eighty point six seven percent operating budget increase from fiscal year twenty with one additional full-time employee. Their proposed local budget of twenty-seven point five million is a point twelve percent increase of thirty-two thousand dollars. This amount reflects additional resources for consumer protection, community outreach, and the removal of nearly one point nine million for one-time contracting and document digitization costs. As part of our budget, Mayor Bowser prioritized two hundred thousand to improve our customer complaints management system, something we committed to in the wake of the tragic Kennedy Street Fire. These funds would allow D C R A to shore up how we track and manage complaints and tips, especially those that require multiple site visits and administrative search warrants. This investment will also help us better track potential unlicensed rental properties, bad actors, and prevent them from continuing to do business as landlords in the district. The proposed special purpose revenue fund budget of just over forty-six million reflects a fourteen point fourteen percent increase from fiscal year twenty. Approximately seventy-one percent of this increase of about four point one million is allocated to the accelerated plan review program to continue our commitment to deliver permits faster to our customers. The remaining increase is mainly allocated for abatement and proactive inspection contracts, resources for the OPLA boards and commissions, as well as personal step increases and other adjustments. There is also an intra-district budget increase of hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four for the solar coordinator funded by the Department of Energy and Environment for solar plan reviews. As you know, COVID-nineteen pandemic has impacted the district's revenue, and we will need to leverage our existing resources in order to meet increasing needs in several areas. In the area of property abatement, for example, this will mean prioritizing cases with the greatest need. Comparing our revised fiscal year twenty budget for abatement with the upcoming fiscal year, there is not an increase. We understand that the issue of abatement has become an increasingly, an increasing problem for tenants whose landlords have failed to provide living conditions that are safe and secure for their tenants. That is why D C R A strongly advocates for the council to reengage on Bill twenty-three dash fourteen, the Landlord Accountability Through Expedited Receivership Amendment Act of twenty nineteen, which was submitted by Mayor Bowser on January seventh, twenty nineteen. This bill gives agencies like D C R A the ability to take action against a negligent property owner in Superior Court so that a receiver can be appointed and funds can be acquired to properly abate the property. Receivership under the aforementioned bill and subsequent plans to abate will be closely monitored by the Superior Court to ensure the successful execution of the landlord's abatement of housing code violations. This bill would also grant the court authority to order the property owner to cover the cost of abating the violations, reimburse the district government for any abatement that the district has already performed, and pay the fees associated with displacing tenants. As part of the Budget Support Act, I'm excited to share that the agency will be creating an online marketplace that will digitize, simplify, and improve accountability of third-party construction inspection process. Once the marketplace is live, builders will be able to view all certified third-party inspection operators in one place and then book an inspection based on availability and price. The goal is to make the whole process easier to use while providing D C R A with greater transparency and oversight. Transactions occurring on the platform will be subject to a transaction fee, which over time will support the district's financial plan, create new economic opportunity, and pay for the maintenance of the marketplace. Throughout my tenure as director, I am reminded that D C R A's charge is to continue to foster growth and development in the district and ensure tenants have safe housing while expanding opportunity and promoting innovation for more than fifty-seven thousand businesses and seven hundred thousand residents. With this year's budget and the mayor's steadfast and unwavering support of D C R A, we will continue to do just that in a more streamlined, efficient manner without sacrificing quality, responsiveness, or results. Our agency will build on the successes of last year with one eye looking towards the future and the other cognizant and humbled by past shortcomings. We believe the investment and support shown by the mayor with the council's partnership will lead to even more achievements and successes. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Chappan. My first two questions are for you to submit either from you or from your agency fiscal officer. If you could give me with specificity a breakdown of your inspectors. So this would be housing code inspectors, construction inspectors. I don't know what all kind of inspectors you have, but I'm interested in both construction and in housing. So not inspectors like whoever does weights and measures at the gas pumps. Not interested in that, but in the area of housing and construction. And when I say specificity with, I mean, how many actually go out in the field? How many are supervisory? I think you have some support staff in that. So I want it broken down with specificity. And if you could do that for fiscal years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one.
Understood, Chairman.
My second request is that your agency has several special purpose funds. If you could give me a statement for each special purpose fund with the beginning and ending balances, starting in fiscal year twenty eighteen through fiscal year twenty twenty-one. I've probably asked for this or a variation of this before.
Yeah, I was just looking at the council reports, but we are understanding and we would look at what we submitted and then make sure you get a beginning and end balance by fine as you requested.
Okay. You confused me with something in your statement. You said overall D C R A's fiscal year twenty twenty-one total budget is seventy-three point seven million dollars, which is a one point one million dollar decrease from fiscal year twenty twenty. The budget book shows you're getting an increase, and in fact, a sentence later, you say you're getting an increase. So explain that statement.
Yes, Chairman, if you look at gross funds, fiscal year nineteen versus fiscal year twenty versus fiscal year twenty-one, you will see that for fiscal year twenty, we had a total of seventy-four million. But fiscal year twenty-one is seventy-three point nine. In fiscal year twenty, we had seven million in capital funding. In fiscal year twenty-one, we have zero. So if you remove the capital component and compare the subtotal, that is where you see an increase in the budget. But if you look at it in the context of capital budget, it is a decrease.
So you're factoring in capital when you say D C R A's fiscal year twenty twenty-one total budget is seventy-three point seven million, which is one point one million dollar decrease from seventy-four point eight million F Y twenty twenty.
That's correct. That's I missed that. Overall, the budget in twenty-one was seventy-three point seven. It includes capital.
And that's the, that's a kind of an odd way of putting things. But so that's, that first sentence that I read is operating and in capital. Correct?
That's correct.
Now you are for next year, the mayor's proposing an increase in the velocity budget?
That's correct.
Two point six million dollars. What specifically would these funds be used for?
Now, I have to ask, what table are you referring to so that I can speak specifically to that? Table four or?
I'm looking to my staff.
Okay.
Table four. Well, let's start with this. Am I corrected? Velocity seeing an increase in funding?
Yes, we have an increase in accelerated review program. Looking for the specific activity so that I can give you the breakdown of what actually goes into it. It is an increase of two point six million, and that is because of a few adjustments. What we are seeing is the P S budget decreased by nine hundred and fifty thousand, which was a one-time S B R budget authority approved by the council and moved back to activity thirty ten. The N P S budget increased by three point five million and contracts and furniture and fixtures by a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the net result is the change of two point six million that you are seeing if you compare the four point five million in fiscal year twenty-one with the one point nine in fiscal year twenty.
Did I hear you say that the difference is in non-personal?
There is a series of adjustments. The net result, yes, for N P S, it actually increased by three point five million.
And what's that for?
That is for contractors to support the accelerated review program, which we've made more accessible to homeowners and not just big developers. So our vision to support the mayor's plan for building affordable housing and improving the housing stock in the city is to ensure that expedited permitting is accessible to everyone, whether it's a homeowner or a small business owner who is converting one family, single-family dwelling to two flats, or somebody who's building fifty units of affordable housing.
But the velocity program requires paying a fee.
Yes, the velocity program requires paying a fee, and we, it's something that there's demand for it. But homeowners don't have to pay the same fee as big commercial projects. There's a scale of fees.
And the scale is probably somewhat complicated. Am I correct?
It depends on the size of the project. It can go anywhere from twenty-five hundred to fifty thousand, depending on the square footage of the project. So if you look at it from a square footage standpoint, it's not as complicated, but a calculation of it can be a bit involved.
So homeowner is more likely to be twenty-five hundred?
That's correct.
And the max is fifty thousand?
No, the max is not fifty thousand. The, I was giving a range, the actual cost, if it is not a small residential project. It is based off square footage of the project. So it can, something like the Wolf is not a fifty thousand dollar project. It could be eight hundred thousand or one million. It comes down to the size of the project, Chairman.
And so the two point six million increase, actually the three point five million dollar increase is for, when you say contractors, you mean third-party inspectors?
No, we have our plan reviewers in various disciplines that are contractors. So they work for the city, they work for us, and they augment F T Es. So when a project comes in, we shotgun it out to available reviewers based on their discipline, and they review it, send it back, we do quality assurance, communicate back to the customer, and move the project along.
So is this like Phil Mendelson working as a contractor, ten ninety-nine? I think we would call it employee, not employer, ten ninety-nine. As opposed to Phil Mendelson on the D C R A payroll? Or would this be like A B C Company for which Phil Mendelson happens to work?
It will be A B C Company and Phil Mendelson ends up working for A B C Company.
Let me take a break to see if council members, Chair Bonds are here. Okay. I don't believe there are any other council members. Councilmember Che? Councilmember Bonds? I'm not hearing from them. I will continue. There is a special purpose fund that supports the expedited review. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I had previously asked if you could give me a statement with the beginning and ending balances. Could you throw into that, so I'm going back revising my earlier request, to also provide how much revenue was collected in each of the fiscal years?
Sure.
And probably just to make it complete, show how much was expended, even though I ought to be able to figure that out. If I know the beginning balance, the revenue collected, the ending balance, that would tell me how much was spent. Can you tell me how many permits were processed through Velocity in twenty twenty? That's the current fiscal year?
I can't give you the exact count. I know we've processed over two hundred, but I can get you the specific number of permits that we've processed. And it's important to note, Chairman, that the Velocity Program has evolved. We started virtual expedited permit reviews as part of our strategy to make expedited permitting more accessible. So the same way we are having the Zoom virtual meeting today, we started last year Velocity in that shape where the reviewers, the owner, the architect, the design team all join WebEx, look at the plans, and address comments, and it promotes collaboration. It's been a very successful initiative, and that positioned us well during this pandemic where we had to stop in-person interactions. So the Velocity Program, as it was originally conceived, has evolved where now expedited permit review is accessible for a whole lot more people, and we are doing exclusively virtual Velocity meetings now.
I would remind you of a question I had regarding remote inspections. So I get that, I get that a lot can be done using the internet, but I don't see how all inspections could be done remotely. For instance, a tenant calls and says that my, a tenant calls and says that her apartment is a tenant calls and says that her apartment is a gross violation of the housing code. So I understood from your testimony that the tenant talks to an inspector, she gets her smartphone out, and so she, I guess, does real-time, maybe FaceTime photos of her apartment so the inspector can see. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. What the inspector does beyond just, I know, photos is actually walk the resident through the protocol. So if the complaint comes in, first mold is handled by our DOE, but for something else, the inspector will turn on the, his camera, the resident will turn on their camera, the inspector will guide the resident in terms of pan to the left, pan to the right, show me the issue that you complained about, let's check the smoke detectors, let's make sure they are functional. So that's the experience. It is collaborative and not a one-way, take photos and send it in.
Well, the tenant, in my hypothetical, has got a lot of complaints.
Okay.
And in the, in the winter, the apartment is too hot and humid, and I'm not quite sure how the inspector can tell remotely that the apartment is too hot.
Not all. Sorry?
Or too cold.
When it comes to the virtual inspections, chairman, I agree. Not all inspections ideal for natural environment, but a vast majority of them are. It is an option we are giving residents so that we will be able to address their concerns. Before an inspection actually occurs, chairman, there is a triad process. So in your hypothetical example, when the tenant calls with the complaint, we'll ask a series of questions to ascertain the nature of the complaint, and then we will send electronic or email to the property owner on file and say, these are the issues that have been brought to our attention. We are asking you to address it and confirm abatement prior to the scheduled inspection date. So if abatement doesn't happen prior to the scheduled inspection date, we would connect with the resident using the virtual inspection method, FaceTime or Google Duo, and observe the violations. If it is something that rises to imminent health and danger, we do have personnel that can go into the unit with the tenant's consent.
Well, the impression I have from your, the statement you read was that you're doing all inspections remotely.
We are doing inspections remotely, but not hundred percent inspections remotely. If the tenant wants an in-person inspection, which we've done, or there is immediate health and safety concerns, we go there in person.
All right, well, I'm not asking about immediate health and safety concerns. I mean, those are important. I'm asking about just inspections because there was a complaint of housing code violations. And while I get that a lot can be done remotely, I don't get how all could be done remotely. I don't know how you can do remotely temperature, too hot, too cold. I'm reminded you and I corresponded with regard to a apartment building that a tenant had complained it was too hot, and management said that the tenant had altered the heating unit in the apartment. And now that I'm realizing that that inspection might have been done remotely, the inspector would have had no way of seeing that. And my recollection was that there was no talk about the inspector actually going out and looking at the premise. I don't know how you inspect remotely for mold. If I'm a smart tenant and the mold is so egregious that you can see it everywhere, I could tell the inspector. But it may be that the tenant doesn't even think about mold, and the mold isn't that pervasive. It exists, but it's not that pervasive. A trained eye of the inspector would see it, but the tenant may not think to mention it. So I don't know how the inspector would see that. Hot water, would that be relying entirely on the just the tenant's testimony? As opposed to the, and you would actually cite a landlord and they could be fine over just a statement because the inspector is not there to actually see whether the water is running hot?
No, chairman, not at all. Actually, a few things to mention. There is a process where the landlord actually gets to weigh in on a complaint. So when a complaint comes in that the hot water is not warm enough, or it hasn't even run at all, we send, as part of our triad process, we send that information to the landlord and ask the landlord to, one, confirm that if I address the issue, the landlord can now communicate back to us to say, no, we went in there, the hot water was just fine, or there was a problem that we've addressed. Coming back to the Hubble Square example that we communicated via email, the in-house maintenance person actually had a thermometer in their unit. It wasn't the tenant who did that. So the inspector turned on his FaceTime and was able to see the reading based of the in-house maintenance person putting the temperature-taking device in their unit. It wasn't the tenant or the inspector. So when it comes to the question of assessing temperature, yes, that can be handled remotely with a fair degree of confidence, provided that there are safeguards that are in place. And in this current environment, people just don't want others coming to their homes, and we recognize that, and we work around that by providing them with an option for virtual inspections.
Again, it was my impression from your oral statement that you're not doing any in-person inspections. I misunderstood that?
That's great. Somebody wants in-person inspections, and they meet our protocol. For example, staying at home, nobody is tested positive, nobody's had been symptoms, not traveled outside of their country, all the guidelines that CDC and IBC Health have provided. If they meet that and they want an in-person inspection, we will gladly accommodate.
So can you tell me how many in-person inspections your agency has conducted since, let's say, March seventeenth?
I can look into that and give you the number. I don't have it out of the head, and I don't know how many people have even requested in-person inspections.
I'm making a note here.
Okay.
So you'll get back to me with the number of in-person housing inspections. Housing, we're not talking about all inspections, just housing code since March seventeenth. Was that, did you hear that?
Yes, sir, I got it.
Okay. The proposed budget notes that two hundred thousand dollars will be used to support the Kennedy Street Review recommendations to enhance customer complaint management system. You spoke to that in your statement. I don't think you identified the specific enhancements. What are they?
As far as the two hundred thousand?
Yes.
There are a number of things that the Kennedy Street reports indicated for improvement. One was to have an audit log for changes to a particular case record. Another, which is not just for DCRA, but it was something for all the government agencies to look at, is to have a central intake system. Another was to have a central database that will be accessible by MPV and firms. So with the two hundred K investment, some of the things that we'll be able to put in place will be the robust audit log and also connecting the consumer complaints process with a tickler system so that cases that require multiple site visits and administrative search warrants, there's visibility into the status at any given point in time, and it can also draw on information from other databases within the agency as far as the risk profile and the licensing status in an automated manner. So those are some of the things that we'll be able to put in place with the two hundred thousand dollar investment.
How did you determine that two hundred thousand dollars was the right amount? An audit log? I'm not quite even sure what that is. That process two hundred thousand? Or are you redoing your database, in which case two hundred thousand sounds like it's too low a figure?
The audit log capability is sort of what I call like track changes. So if somebody takes like a word document and they make edits to it, you'll be able to see track changes. We are looking at implementing something like that in a more robust manner. We have some basics in place, but we're looking at implementing something like that at a more robust manner. So like, you know, who touched the case, what edits they did to the record. That is something that is built into a system. The investments we've made in the past, particularly this fiscal year, allows us to be able to absorb some of the enhancements required and not have to need a whole lot of money. That is why we can go farther with two hundred thousand dollars now that we would have been able to a year ago.
Four things, an audit log, central database, a tickler system, and I can't remember what the fourth was.
There's a host of features. One would also include pulling information from other databases. So if, for example, eighteen eighteen LOC is the landlord, being able to automatically pull the history of that property owner from our licensing system or zoning system or permitting system, and putting it in one place for the investigator waiting on the case, are some of the things that we'll be able to do.
The proposed budget would cut one point three million dollars from occupational professional licensing. What is the justification for this reduction?
The one point three million dollars is the net effect of a few changes. PS budget decreased by two hundred and five thousand. As one of the compliance specialists is moved to a different activity, internal audit, and the government information specialist is moved to activity ten sixty to support the legislative and FOIA matters. The non-personal budget decreased by one million for a number of reasons. One, there's a removal of the one-time cost for document digitization. Based of our prior hearings, people had concerns that certain documents were not available online. So we have funding this year to dig, scan, index, and digitize a number of our records. So that was a one-time funding. And the funding amounts not being available in fiscal year twenty-one reflects as part of the decrease. Then the, there's lower anticipated cost for our professional licensing and examination contracts. We used to have one contract for our professional licensing, and we've broken it into three separate contracts to bring more competition and get favorable pricing for the city. So those are some of the changes that result in one point three million dollar reduction.
As part of the lower contracting cost due to the elimination of the MOU with the Attorney General's Office?
No, not for that activity, not at all. This contracting cost is around licensing, the system that handles like barbers, and so it has nothing to do with the MOU without OAG.
So are there savings from the, eliminating the MOU?
Eliminating the MOU is a cost avoidance for us because the work has been absorbed by our reimagined legal services division.
Where is that cost avoidance shown, reflected in the budget?
It's a paper activity essentially, because the MOU that we have on the budget now is with our DOE that is actually bringing money in. But as far as the savings from the MOU with the OAG, that is something that I can have, I therefore give a greater detail where it could show, but it's not something that will be very obvious.
I don't understand. You said that the MOU had the effect of bringing money into the agency?
No, we have one MOU with DOE that is to fund a solar plan review position.
But I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the MOU with the Attorney General.
Yes, the attorney general, we didn't budget for it for fiscal year twenty-one because we don't need the service. So as far as how you see the numbers, it becomes a wash comparing fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one, because if we had it in fiscal year twenty-one, it would show as additional spend.
You've totally lost me. If you had an expense in twenty twenty and you don't in twenty twenty-one, that would show up as a reduction. But you're saying it's a wash. So what's washing what?
There's a series of additions and reductions across the entire agency's budget. So let's, for the purpose of this conversation, say the MOU amount was hundred and eighty thousand dollars. At the end of the day, when you look at our fiscal year twenty-one budget, that hundred and eighty thousand that we don't have to spend in fiscal year twenty-one.
Shows up as a cut in your agency in line twelve or line thirty-three or line eighty-seven. It still shows up as a reduction, a cut for FY twenty-one, and you're not telling me where.
Yes, that's something I can circle back with you. As far as the specific line, I don't immediately know which specific line it is to flag that up for you, chairman.
Now, the boards, the professional boards and commissions have objected strenuously to your, you're stepping in and canceling their MOU with the Attorney General's Office. They've been receiving services from the Attorney General for, I believe, decades.
We've transitioned the service since May one, I believe, and we've actually assigned two attorneys to support them. We've put in place a robust engagement plan, and there's not been any drop in service level at all. So so far, I've not heard any real concern about the services they are providing, and our commitment and my conversation with the board members has been that we will stand by them. They will get the services that they need from a diversified and experienced team.
Well, it was pretty clear to me in my discussions a month or so ago with the executive office of the mayor that this was all about further disconnecting the Attorney General from any role in any of the agencies. Long before you became Director of DCRA, the Attorney General's Office was responsible for the agency general counsel. And for reasons which I don't understand, the executive believes that we should, I guess, duplicate services. And while we have a chief legal officer, the Attorney General, now each agency has a agency counsel that is that reports not to the chief legal officer for the city, but to the executive office of the mayor. That might make sense politically, but it doesn't sound like a good way to have independent legal advice. This move with regard to the boards and commission strikes me as nothing more than furthering that. Could I ask your agency fiscal officer, Mr. Goody, is that how you pronounce his name? Where this saving shows up?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Could you speak a little louder?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
You're very soft spoken.
That's how he speaks.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. The the line for the or the MOU with OAG is, yes, it is within the 2095 activity, but it is really a small amount compared to the 1.3 million and that's why.
Can you say that again a little bit more slowly with regard to which line?
The the line is the activity 2095, which is occupational and professional licensing. The line, the 1.3 reduction.
Let me see if I'm looking at table four.
Yes, table four.
Line 2095.
Yes. But the amount is really small for this year, for example, the amount is like only 21, 81,000. Because they will you spend from October to end of March. So it is 81,000. So compared to the 1.3 million reduction, it is really small. But it is the activity it belongs is 2095.
So full year, how much did it cost?
Last year it was about, I believe, 160 something. I don't have the actual amount, but it is in the area of 160,000, which is twice the 80,000, the 81,000 for this.
So there's a total cut in occupational professional licensing of 1,339,000.
Yes.
Includes. That would include 161,000 from losing that MOU.
160,000 is for FY19, but FY20 was 81,000.
We budgeted the full amount, didn't we, for FY20?
Yes, if I may jump in here, as far as FY20, it was based of our projected need for the service. We had planned on transitioning and as a result, didn't have a need for budgeting 161,000, whatever the exact amount is. The MOU was expressly clear that the termination period was earlier. So there wasn't any funding at that level aside FY18.
You don't disagree with me that the boards and commissions were not happy about this change?
It was a fear of change going into it. The change has occurred and the service is being delivered finally. So change is something that we are all generally apprehensive about. But since the switch, there's not been any slowdown in service delivery. And I think that is how success has to be measured.
And of the rest of that cut of 1.3 million, most of that roughly a million is backing out one-time funding?
The backing outs, yes, that's for the document digitization.
Under Controller Source Group 41, which is contracts, shows the agency has budgeted $300,000 for short-term rental systems maintenance. What is that?
What people call the Airbnb law. As you know, rightfully, Chairman, there are many platforms that are done at Airbnb. So we are currently in the procurement phase for the system that will manage the licensing, the compliance, the fees associated with implementing the law. And we expect that the system will go into maintenance mode in fiscal year 21. So that is why we've made an allotment for that implementation.
So when will the system go and be online?
We expect the system to be online this fiscal year and to be in maintenance mode in FY21.
So it will, what is maintenance mode?
If patches, if you have a piece of software, you will have to configure it, you will have to do patches for security vulnerabilities. You will have to do updates, some changes to your workflow. So that is what we call maintenance mode. Maintenance also includes licenses that we procure for the system.
So when's it going online?
As soon as the procurement is complete, we'll begin the assistance development. We in the phase of our review proposals and we expect that process to move along fairly quickly.
Okay, so that gives me no answer. When will it be online? You must have told the contractor or you must be prepared to tell the contractor when you want it online.
Yes, we told the contractor we wanted online this fiscal year.
You mean October 1st or October, August 1st?
I don't have a specific date, Chairman, because the contract has not been awarded. What we do know is that during the contract award date, there's some negotiation as far as the go-live date, but we are moving as fast as we can to implement the system.
Okay, so you won't say what your deadline is for it to be online. So it could be online September 30th because that would be this fiscal year. And so you are, you're going to procure a new computer system or system to handle the short-term rental law. Goes online September 30th and a month later, we need $300,000 to maintain the system with patches.
Chairman, that's overly simplistic. If you buy a system based of number of users, you buy licenses associated with that. For example, the Zoom software system we are using for this conversation has number of users allowed. You pay a recurring fee based on the number of users. In the short-term licensing scenario that we are looking at, we anticipate paying license fees based on the number of users when the system goes live and when the development is complete. And that is what we see as maintenance cost. Now, when there are security updates to patch up any vulnerabilities, when you have a maintenance contract in place, it allows you to get those benefits. Similar to how people will have a loan and then they'll have a maintenance guy take care of the loan. Software implementation is no different.
You did say patches. So how about this? How about if you get back to me with how you arrived at the $300,000 figure?
Okay.
Also under contracts and grants, you have $576,000 budgeted for quote digital marketplace platform maintenance and services, unquote. What does that entail?
The.
Asking what you spoke about in your oral statement.
The, I'll try to put it a bit simply. The marketplace, think of it like an Airbnb, an Airbnb is a marketplace. Angie's List is a marketplace. Amazon is a marketplace, eBay is a marketplace. So it is a website that connects a service provider to somebody seeking a service. With the digital marketplace, we want to bring more transparency and accountability into the third-party construction inspections process. As you know, we have companies that provide third-party inspections. So when you need footing or some type of inspection, you can call a DCR inspector or you can call a third-party company that helps us keep pace with the demand and service levels. What we are looking to accomplish with a digital marketplace is put them all online so that we have visibility into the process from beginning to end. That is what the system is about. And once the system development is complete, it has to be maintained.
How new is the system?
It's something we are working on now and we expect it to be completed this fiscal year, which would require maintenance in the next fiscal year. So it's an expense that we can't avoid. Systems we implement require maintenance similar to capital projects that have like an operating impact like the short-term rental system.
So this sounds like the same conversation I had a minute ago. Then would you provide as a separate answer, just a justification or itemization for how you arrived at $576,000?
Yes, we'll be happy to provide you with those estimates and how we arrived at those numbers.
Do you have any in your capital budget for IT? Is there any new money for fiscal year 2021?
No, fiscal year 21 activities from a budgeting standpoint have been pushed out similar to what you heard about Office of Zoning. So without budget for fiscal year 21, there's a zero capital allotment.
Is there enough money available from the current fiscal year? Enough money left over that that helps you with your IT needs in fiscal year 21?
No, I wouldn't go that far on the limb. What I can say though is based of how, based of the budget the mayor has proposed, we are well positioned to meet the resource demands and needs in fiscal year 21. So changes to the budget will definitely compromise our abilities to meet the goals around safer housing, consumer protection permits and licenses.
I I didn't understand your answer. It was, it's enough money or it isn't enough money?
The money we have in our fiscal year 21 budget, special purpose revenue and local as it is and how they are in our portion is sufficient to meet our needs in fiscal year 21.
That's local, that's local dollars, operating, local dollars, special purpose dollars, that's operating money.
That's correct.
Okay, but I'm asking you about your capital budget. Are you saying that the local dollars are what's going to help you with regard to the IT needs, the capital IT needs?
Yes, what I'm saying effectively is the resources we have in local and special purpose revenue is sufficient to help us with our needs, our IT needs in fiscal year 21 without any capital funding.
I guess let me ask your agency fiscal officer again. What, how much is projected to be left over in the capital account at the end of this fiscal year?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the the amount that is expected is after, if the systems, the marketplace is going to be procured, the contract is going to be awarded very soon, there will be no leftover in the capital.
Don't go away. So the answer is after the procurement of the digital marketplace platform, there'll be zero left over.
Yes.
But you're also procuring the short-term rental system?
The short-term rental system has its own project line, budget line. There is a 2.2 million set aside for that.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
There's about 2.2 million set aside for the short-term rental system.
That's to procure it?
Yes.
So you're spending 2.2 million this year to procure short-term rental. How much are you spending for digital marketplace?
We still don't know the exact amount, but we have about 1.2 million from the capital.
So short-term rental is going to actually cost more?
I I wouldn't say that because we still don't know the final amount because this is still under procurement and we don't know how much the contract is going to be signed for.
But between these, there'll be no money left over at the end of the year.
That's correct.
Director Trump, the 2.2 million for short-term rental sounds awfully high, which makes me wonder. Is DCRA planning on having the online platforms register the hosts?
We don't have. We've made a determination that we're going to have the platform register the host. The requirements that we've gone to procurement with requires the host to register with us. And we issue sort of like the license and we'll make that license information visible to the host. Because my person can, as you know, host can partner with different platforms. So having the host get through their licensing requirements through the platform may not be the best way. And based on the meetings that you said would you have with the host, which I did have with them, there wasn't a lot of excitement about them handling the registration.
I don't think the platform should handle the registration. So your testimony is that the hosts will register with DCRA and DCRA will issue the license to the hosts.
That's correct. That's the way we envision the system.
Did DCRA submit any enhancement requests as part of the development of the fiscal year 2021 budget?
Yes, we requested the Kennedy enhancement.
Was that the only one?
And we requested the maintenance for the short-term rental and also the customer relationship management system.
The last one was the, I want to say CRM, but that's part of the Kennedy enhancement, isn't it?
No, Chairman, and I'm glad you mentioned that because in previous testimony, people confuse the CRM with the complaints management system and that is not the case. and that is not the case. The CRM is the foundation for managing our customer interactions regardless of the separate divisions that a case has to go through. So the CRM, for example, also makes outbound phone calls. It does surveys, it does live chats. That is not the Kennedy enhancement. The Kennedy enhancement will connect or as the techy say, will integrate with the CRM, but there are different systems that work or we plan on making them work together.
Were there any other enhancement requests that you'd submitted?
Not that I recall.
So you mentioned three, Kennedy, short-term rental and CRM?
Yes.
In the supplemental budget for the current fiscal year, the revised budget, $250,000 will be rescinded from DCRA's local funds budget. How were those funds identified?
Chairman, I would need your help here. Where are you reading that? Is that? What table?
It's not in a table. It's the revised budget for the current fiscal year. So I've switched documents.
Okay.
Your current, your budget, the executive has asked the council to rescind $350,000 from your budget.
Yeah, it doesn't strike me on the tab, but if I can circle back with you on the details, would that be okay?
Would the agency fiscal officer know? Mr. Goody?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the $350,000 will be from the FY '20 vacant savings.
From what, FY '20 what?
From the personal services budget.
What is that, vacant positions?
Yes, from vacant savings, yes.
Is that the entirety of it?
Yes, the whole, the whole amount is from vacant savings.
Which reminds me, for FY '21, what are the vacancy savings?
We put about 1.1 million is factored into the budget as vacant savings for FY '21.
Now you said about, what is the amount?
The exact amount I can prove.
This is a budget hearing.
The exact amount is 1,127,731.
1,127,000?
731.
731?
Yes.
That's taken from the, from the, the FY '21 proposed budget reflects 1.1 million dollars in vacancy savings?
Yes.
How many vacancies are there in the agency today?
I can see that. Today we have nine vacancies.
Nine?
Yes, due to the hiring freeze, Chairman.
Nine out of about 400, 460 FTEs, I think?
Yes, because the global amount is 33, but because of the hiring freeze, we only have nine.
Okay, so you have 20, 24 additional vacancies that are frozen?
That's correct.
Let me repeat that. So you have 33 vacancies, 24 are frozen and nine are not frozen?
That's correct.
Let me see, please. Can you itemize the expected annual expenditures for the resident inspection training program? Including costs to conduct background checks, train and test inspectors and payments for made for qualified inspections? And get back to me with that or can you do that right now?
For FY '21, I can give you the amount that we envision spending for the historical.
Okay.
I can get back to you later. FY '21 is 98,000 to cover 172 inspectors.
To cover what?
172 professional inspectors. It's not a lot of money.
$98,000 for 172 professional inspectors?
Yes, sir.
And that includes background checks, checks, training, testing and payments for the inspections?
For the training, we do it internally. For the background check, we've already passed background checks. This will go towards payments we make for inspections. So I believe, for example, vacant building qualified inspection is about $30. Housing inspection, I believe, is about $45. We publish the schedule of our rates on our website, but I give you a sense of how many inspections can be done with that level of investment.
It's $30 for, per apartment?
Pay a qualified inspection.
And $45 per house?
For housing unit inspection.
What's the 30 for, housing units and housing units?
Yes, the $30 is for vacant building. That's a discipline, like a blighted building is 30. For housing property maintenance, it is $45.
Housing units of any size?
That's correct.
So for FY '21, $98,000, that's basically for inspecting vacant structures and inspecting housing units?
And some business compliance inspections as well. So as we deal with the pandemic, one of the areas where we've had to step up enforcement activity is compliance surveys of businesses. Illegal construction is also another area. So I want to use this opportunity to actually correct for the record the rates that we have. Vacant property is $30, housing is $40, illegal construction is $100 for a stop work order.
Okay. Where are we with, I'm going to go back to short-term rental housing. Where are we with the emergency and proposed rulemaking?
The rulemaking is being reviewed by Executive Branch.
And how long are they planning on reviewing it? Another couple of months, couple of years, couple of decades?
What I do know, Chairman, is that we are working around the clock to personalize various aspects of the program while the rulemaking follows a concurrent path. So we've put our focus now on putting the licensing regime and the system and the procurement in place so that at some point across this path will be rulemaking.
Let me see, we had a hearing last November, I'm going to say like November 19th and the, at the time, we expected that the rulemaking was going to be published in the December 6th DC Register. Subsequently, let's see, we had your performance oversight hearing. It seemed like maybe the city administrator had stepped in to personally handle the rulemaking, but it was imminent and now here we are. I have to figure three months later and it's being reviewed. Maybe you could pass a message back that this is an awfully long review, particularly when, gosh, I can't remember now. 80% of the short-term rental units would be legal if we just got the rules in place?
I'll definitely pass on the message. We know that a lot of our residents depend on short-term rental as an economic opportunity and we'll continue working to make this a reality.
Yeah, or to put it differently, that about 80% of the hosts are breaking the law, but they would be legal as soon as you get the rulemaking done. We already talked about the quite procurement process to acquire assistance aid and licensing. How soon will you be able to allow hosts to get to apply for a license?
Once the rules finalized and we have this system in place, they will be able to apply for a license. And the way we've envisioned the system, it will be a fairly quick process. Do everything online and in a day or two, get a decision.
So two steps, the rules have to be finalized and the system has to be in place. Let me look at my notes here. So we don't know when the system will be in place, other than this fiscal year. And we don't know when the rulemaking will be done, even though last November we had a hearing and they were imminent. And until those two indefinite things happen, nobody can apply for a license.
There is the solution and what we've been pursuing is the concurrent path. We've had engagement with the platforms. They provide us feedback on the licensing regime. We know what is happening in our jurisdictions and we are working tirelessly to deliver the online system. So I am optimistic about what will come out of that process. And it's just going to take a little bit more time than we had all wished for. But I do understand where you're coming from, Chairman.
Well, I would appreciate if you would pass that on to others in the EOM. So when do you begin conducting public outreach?
As far as the short-term rentals?
Yes.
There were, there was some brief activity with the platforms and also with people who had communicated to us prior about their interest in short-term rentals. But once the rules are published, we anticipate the outreach intensifying because they'll have to comment on it. And that is something that we are looking forward to because it will be an activity that we will devote a considerable amount of resources to it to ensure that we capture all viewpoints and we implement it as smoothly as possible.
Give me just a second. I do want to note that I appreciate that you're implementing some metrics like the customer satisfaction, but you said 95% of inquiries were resolved within three days or less. And you had another one. We responded to complaints and then conducted an inspection in less than two days, 67% of the time. And I also appreciate that you've said several times that your goal is to be constantly improving. I note that while 95% sounds high, it also means that there were 2,250 complaints that took much longer to resolve, which I'm sure was displeasing to those 2,250 individuals. So I think it's important that you continue to try to increase those, try to increase those percentages. I do not have any other questions for you. Was somebody taking notes on what you're getting back to me with?
Oh, yes, we have a laundry list from the breakdown of inspectors, beginning and balance of our special purpose revenue funds, how we arrived at our estimate for some of the maintenance. I have my staff taking notes, so review it and get back to you. We'll also take a look at some of the council submissions we had so that if we just have to add another column to what you've already requested, we'll do so. And Chairman, you probably recall that in prior testimonies you had mentioned that we have to look at our customer satisfaction. And that was your idea that was implemented as far as putting in place a survey. So today, whenever you make an inquiry to the department by email or a phone call that goes through a customer relationship management system, at the end of that process, you will get a survey. You only have one of three options, we're excellent, we're satisfactory, or we're poor. And you get an opportunity to provide comments. That is what is being fueling the agency transformation. So while there are significant opportunities for improvement, I'm really pleased with the performance of my staff during this particularly challenging times. As you look at our jurisdictions, we've responded effectively and will continue to improve to protect our residents in the District of Columbia.
There were a few other things I'd requested and although you didn't, you didn't suggest, what you just cited was the entire list. I do want to mention some of the others. How many permits have been processed through Velocity? The number of in-person housing code inspections since March 17th? The date when the short-term rental system will be online and explaining the 300,000 maintenance? I'm looking at this other page, I think there were a couple others. I don't have them clearly identified in front of me, but Flane took notes as well.
Okay.
That's going to conclude this hearing. Thank you, Director Trappa.
Thank you, Chairman and staff, council staff.
So let me close out the hearing. This concludes the hearing today on proposed budgets by the mayor and the opportunities for the public to comment on the proposed budgets for DCRA, Office of Planning, Office of Zoning, Historic Preservation Review Board, District of Columbia Retirement Board, from whom we did not request testimony from the agency itself, other post-employment administration, again, from which we did not request testimony from the agency itself. The committee as a whole will have another hearing this Friday on the University of District of Columbia, the Commission on Arts Humanities and on Events DC. And I believe that hearing starts at nine o'clock in the morning this Friday. And the registration deadline ends, it's already ended. Registration deadline. I had mentioned earlier that we have joint hearings with the Education Committee on June fourth, where there are public witnesses on any aspect of education. And the also the State Superintendent of Education June eleventh, Deputy Mayor for Education in DC Public School System. The committee as a whole will have a hearing on four measures related to the budget on June seventeenth and June eighteenth. And those are Bill twenty three dash seven sixty, the Budget Support Act, twenty three dash seven six one, the Local Budget Act for twenty twenty one, Bill twenty three dash seven six two, the Federal Portion Budget Request Act for twenty twenty one, and Bill twenty three dash seven six three, which is the revised budget or supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty. For the hearing of the committee, the whole is having on June seventeenth and June eighteenth. It's still possible for individuals to register to testify, but they don't have to. Nobody has to register to testify. You can email your written testimony to cow@dc council.us. That could be committee of the whole, except it's not. It's COW stands for committee of the whole, cow@dc council.us. And that's showing on the screen right now. Or you can call two oh two four three zero six nine four eight. That's a special number where you can read your testimony up to three minutes and it will be automatically transcribed for our benefit. Again, that number and it's on the screen is two oh two four three zero six nine four eight. When to do that, you call the testimony transcription line, the number I just gave. When prompted to read your testimony, speak slowly and clearly. You may provide up to three minutes of testimony and your testimony will be transcribed and made part of the record. I also want to note that information about the committee, the whole hearings. And we post the testimony to this as well can be found by going to this website, chairman mendelson dot com slash FY twenty twenty one. That's Chairman, C H A R, C H A I R M A N, Mendelson, M E N D E L S O N at, no, excuse me, dot com. Chairman mendelson dot com slash FY twenty twenty one. You can get the witness lists there, the submitted testimony, including the agency testimony. So I want to thank the witnesses, the citizen witnesses who testified at the beginning of the agency directors. We will do this again on Friday. And with that, the time is one ten in the afternoon and this hearing is adjourned.